Recording in progress.
Can you, do I need to talk in this thing? Can you hear me?
All right, we can go, uh, you can, you can begin, Michelle. You can actually just pull the mic out.
Just pull the mic.
Pull it out and hold it and pass it around when you guys are speaking. The Honorable Judge, thank you for being here with us today.
Hello?
Did you, did you?
We'll give, we'll give it an extra minute.
Okay.
For, just for full disclosure, it's a study session, so we didn't need a quorum to, to do this. We're others, we were gonna do it. Yeah, we're not voting on anything today. We're just presentation. How you doing? How you doing, sir? How you doing, Judge? How you doing?
Hello, how are you?
You know, whenever you're ready.
Ready.
He's ready.
He's ready. Okay, so, um, I don't know if we wanna start. We're gonna be on page four.
Speak up into the mic.
Page four is our budget. Um, I do have a couple of changes, um, that were on here. Um, the first one would be the judge's salary elect, which is the first line item, one oh one, one three zero seven zero three. Um, the requested budget and the recommended budget, um, Shannon had marked it up to ninety four thousand one ninety two. That is set by the state, so we need to drop it down to ninety one four four eight. That's not changing. Um, they might change with the state, but the state has kept the city's portion the same. So that needs to, um, decrease to ninety one four four eight.
Okay, thank you. We'll make that adjustment. Maggie will give us the final. Cause beautiful brain.
Okay.
You let me into the meeting?
And then the next line item for salaries, I need to make an adjustment with that as well, cause it didn't account for, um, we have three clerks who will be hitting their two-year mark, which there's a step increase. So that needs to go to, I had requested, um, eight eight seven five five seven, but we do have, um, one of those clerks left. We hired a new clerk, so she'll be not getting that step increase, so I need eight eight two nine seventy for that position.
Eight eight?
Eight eight two nine seven zero.
Can you tell me what the, uh, are they in the personnel page?
Yep, they'll be on the personnel page. They're deputy court clerks.
No, they're not. I don't have from, uh, we only have, uh, hi, we have only para- one paralegal on the personnel page.
Um, I'm on page fo- uh, page two for the personnel page. This is page two.
Go down one more. So here we have.
Okay.
So you have the department, twenty district court, judges ninety, ninety-four, she put it at, it's supposed to go down to ninety-one.
Ninety-one four four eight.
And then you have court administrator.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then we have probation director.
You have probation director.
Deputy court administrator.
Okay.
Court reporter.
Court reporter.
Which, yep.
There's two of them.
Two of those. I have one probation officer.
One probation officer.
Two court officers.
Okay.
And then we have four deputy court clerk ones. Those are hired prior to twenty sixteen.
Okay.
And then we have, we have four deputy court clerk twos, but one of those is a brand-new hire, so starting in at the lowest salary, which is, which is there.
But this is going down.
Yep, so that, so she, well, she's starting in at the starting salary, which will be thirty-five thousand eight thirty-nine. Um, and then the other three court clerks are going to be hitting their two-year mark within this next fiscal year.
So they're getting a raise.
According to contractual, they get a step increase, and so their salary's jumping up to thirty-nine thousand four thirty-five.
From thirty-five to thirty-nine?
Yes.
Maggie, do you have that? Judge, can we make note of that?
Thirty-nine four thirty-five.
And what's the total sum?
So the total sum for the, for, um, the court clerks and is eight thousand, or eight, eight, eight hundred fifty-one thousand five sixty-nine. And then Shannon had put in here for additional wages for like longevity, sick payout, um, vacation payout. She calculated thirty-one thousand four oh one, so I added that to it, which gave me to the eight eight two nine seventy.
Your, your requested budget was eight eight seven.
Yeah, my, that was because I had four court clerks gonna be hitting the two-year mark, but one of them just left, and so we just hired a new one who's starting at the beginning.
Eight eight two nine seventy.
Yes.
We offered you eight seven two.
Yeah, and that didn't account for the step increases.
Okay, well, that's the difference of how much there comes from the number.
Seven thousand, something, I think.
I'm going from eight eight two nine seven zero minus eight seven two one eight two.
No, but you have to add whatever she added.
And, yeah, so then, and I had a decrease with this, so if, once I get through this, I have a.
Yeah, but the overall sum though.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I have a bottom line. I'll give you the bottom line if I get through everything. So, right now, so.
She gave me the sum total that she needs?
Mm-hmm.
With the adjustment, the total sum is eight eight.
Eight eight two nine seventy, yes.
And they budgeted eight seven two one eight two. Either way, there's a shortage. We're taking and putting, there's still a shortage.
Yeah, because the judges went down some, the, the salaries went up. I also have, um, if we go, I mean, you can see, do you wanna go line item by line item?
Yeah, but that was just for the salaries.
Yep.
Salaries in general were, were off by ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, the next line item for retired prior years, I had requested fifteen thousand one forty-eight, because we did have a clerk who retired, and under the, I'm under the impression it takes three years to pay out any of their back pay, whatever they had for their vacation and what have you. Um, they didn't give it to me, so I'm not sure if that clerk had re- received all her money, or she doesn't need it, but the comptroller or the administration took that out.
Okay, well, I mean, obviously, if they did it, they probably give it to them payout.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm guessing, I don't know, I'm, I don't know about that. That would be running through the comptroller's office. Um, my part-time, um, one hundred eighty-one thousand eight two five, overtime, seven thousand. Um, clothing, which would be for the court officers, this is a contractual, twelve hundred. Um, the hospital insurance, life insurance, government pension, and the fringe benefits is set by the comptroller. Um, supplies, um, forty-three thousand. I have, um, utilities, we did ask for an increase as everything's on the rise, and we've been, the DTE bills and water bills, everything's been high, so I went high, budgeted on that. I mean, we're currently budgeted at eighty-seven thousand, but I'm already at eighty-six percent and spent in my current budget right now. So I did go high for that, um, and the comptroller's office agreed. Um, the dues and members, I requested forty-five hundred, they gave me five thousand, I only need forty-five hundred, so we're, we were only like fifty-six dollars above with all our memberships of what we have to do, so at forty-five hundred will work for that. Um, the court fees.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure, George, we got that?
No, that one is, um, line item dues members, so it's.
Eight oh two.
Uh, eight oh two.
So you're okay with taking it this time to forty-five hundred?
Yep, I'm okay with forty-five hundred.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Every little bit helps.
We can give the five hundred dollars back to, uh, Director LaFevre, though.
Okay, and then, um, the next line item would be court fees, um, we have it at sixty-five thousand.
What is court fees?
That, um, we have our court fees, which pays up for a majority of our, um, some data that we do for the JDW, which is a judicial data warehouse, which we have to, um, send information to the state. All our interpreter fees, which we're in a very diverse area and we have.
You're gonna, you think you're gonna exceed your number this year?
Yeah, we were at sixty thousand, we are going up because our interpreter fees.
Activity is you're at twenty-four thousand four fifty-seven.
Um, at the court fees?
Yeah, your activity through three thirty-one.
Yeah, that's been going, cause we've been getting high into the wall. Right now, we have our interpreter agency, some bills weren't paid, and they have several outstanding bills that are going, so we're, um, we've been, he, just two of them were approved last night, cause they're over two, over fifteen hundred all the time, so we have about four outstanding bills with them. Um, so that money's gonna jump up pretty quickly.
You think we're gonna still use thirty thousand in the next month?
Um, maybe not in the next month, but let me get to the end of my budget, because I might have, I might need to use this to buy computers for myself.
Well, hold on.
For the, for the, because I'm gonna ask, I asked for in a capital outlay, which they took away. We have the oldest computers in the whole entire city.
Well, this is what I want you to know. Why I'm asking you this question is because you're not gonna be able to take this out from here.
Right.
They're gonna take this and they're gonna put it in the general fund, and they're gonna say you lost it, if you don't use it. So my question to you is, before the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Send in a budget amendment.
Okay.
And says, hey, we didn't use all the money for our court fees.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to use five thousand dollars for computers, or ten thousand dollars for computer, or whatever the remaining amount is.
Mm-hmm.
Just don't let it go back to the general fund, cause once you, if you don't use it, they're not, they're not gonna give it back to you.
My spotlight, that's in my, that was what I was going to ask to do, so I was thinking to.
I want you to add it to your.
Yeah, no, that's what I wanna try to utilize. I just told him today, I said, this is what I might be able to do, is piecemeal, and be able to maybe get our computers that I would requested for next budget time, but I might be able to get them out of this time. Cooper gave me a bottom line, so, um, we definitely one thousand percent need new computers, so, because they're not gonna be supported come October, um, for lean and what have you, so, but that's on my, that's on my agenda.
Just make sure we do before the fiscal year ends.
Yep, I'm waiting in May. I was planning on doing something in May, so I just wanted to kinda see where we were at for, um, number-wise. Um, the next line is our contractual services.
I have a quick question for you. I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Please forgive me. Looking at it, use thirty thousand, you're requesting an additional five thousand, they didn't give you any money, you said, of the amount that you requested in the capital outlay. Why don't we take that number from sixty-five, give it to forty-five, take twenty and add it to your capital outlay? So that way you don't have to come back to the city council and say, can you move this so I can purchase this? Now you have twenty thousand in capital outlay to work with, and you don't even have to come to us anymore.
For this current budget year?
Yes, no, not for this current.
Yeah, I'm looking at this current budget year to do this.
I know, and I'm giving it to you for the following year as well, so that way now you, instead of coming back to us next year.
Mm-hmm.
You, you're set to go spend twenty thousand like you please, as you please.
Yes.
So what we can do is, here you're requesting sixty-five. Traditionally, you spend about thirty-five, forty grand. Take the remaining twenty, don't, we're not gonna, we're not gonna short your budget, we're just gonna give you the twenty thousand and add it to your capital outlay. That way you, the court can use it however they please.
Okay.
So you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I mean, if I need it for interpreter fees, I'm gonna have to use it for interpreter fees. That's where I'm getting, cause my interpreters, we have an enormous amount of interpreters, and if the case is not settling, we have to adjourn and reschedule that interpreter, so.
That's fine, and then you, then you could take it back at our capital outlays, but if you don't, I'm abusing it. Cause you have capital outlays to go buy even more computers, or even more tablets, or whatever the court needs.
Okay.
And I'm just looking at it as a win for you, like.
Okay.
I would take this court fees from, for next year, now, cause this year you're already gonna do it. You're sending a budget amendment in May.
Mm-hmm.
For next year.
Mm-hmm.
Let's make this forty-five and take twenty thousand added to your capital outlay, because you have zero dollars for capital outlay.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I mean, it's still in the budget, so that's, I mean, it's, it's fine, cause.
Yeah, the numbers don't change, you just have flexibility of doing what you and the court wanna do.
Okay.
Okay, can we, can we, uh, uh, make that to forty-five? Uh, and then we're gonna move capital outlay twenty thousand up, so there's still the sixty-five thousand, you get to just choose. And if you wanna use the capital outlay to pay your.
Interpreters.
Interpreters, do what you want.
Yeah, we have to, okay.
Can you do that with capital outlay? If you can. No, bring it as a budget amendment.
Bring it as a budget.
Well, it, it works like that. In a different situation, the court is, cause what it is, is you approve our budget, and basically it's a lump sum budget, even though you guys break it down as line items. We, if we have the money in the fund, we can use it out of that account, so it's something there, because with the court, we're a separate entity. We have to have our budget approved by the council, the bottom line. The only thing we can't interchange through things are the salary line items. Everything else is kinda, if we say, yeah, if we need to, you know, okay, I'm running short in this, I could take it out of like my court fees.
I just want you to be careful though.
Oh, yes.
Cause we passed a resolution under Gary, basically stating, and no line items to be adjusted without approval of the council.
Oh, right, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't like transfer, but we'll just, you know, because ours, uh, I got it, I, I got it.
Well, good.
Yes, I got it.
If you need to transfer back next year, just your model.
Okay, yep, absolutely.
Have we added, how come, we can add the contractual services, uh, for the interpreters?
Mm-hmm.
Have we add them there? You don't have to.
No, the contractual services, no, that would be, um, just our court fees, it's for juror payments, witness payments, interpreters. That's what we pay out of, out of the court fees, so.
Yes, I'm saying.
But the contractual services, um, we have, what we budgeted here is for our case management system, which handles all our cases and our processing and what have you, and our two magistrates. That's what's in our contractual.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
I'm not trying to make it.
Nope, I got you. Nope, that's, that's fine, um, here nor there, right, yeah. Um, tuition, um, is twenty-five hundred, which in the contract it's higher, but we haven't had anybody use any tuition, any. So, I mean, at this point in time, if we needed to, um, ask for a budget amendment or what have you at that point in time, if somebody, you know, starts taking classes, we'll come back. Uh, the MIDC grant expenditure, this is what we're responsible for as a local portion with the MIDC grant. We have to pay, um, that amount, and actually is nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars, so we just put ten thousand in there. Um, repair and maintenance, um, for things going on in the building, computers, leaks, anything that we have to do. As we know, the Justice Center has a bunch of leaks anymore. Um, and travel and education, that's speaks for itself, and legal library fees.
Use online services for the law library for the research?
We do some online and a lot of books. The judges like their books still, so we still get the books. But we're grandfathered in, we have a very old subscription that we can, if we were to join new and try to do the online site as well as the books, it would be really expensive, so we've just kept on, and they keep trying to get us to come off of it, but I'm like, no, it's cheaper to do it this way, so. Still expensive, but we have to, we have to do it, we have to have a law library. Um, so the things that I had listed in the capital outlay, um, were, the court needs new computers, obviously. Um, our computers are the oldest in the city. We have not had any new computers for probably over ten years, maybe fifteen years. Um, so coming up to the end of life this October, our computers have been updated from Windows seven to Windows ten, and there's no room. They're, they're not capable to upgrade to Windows eleven, and in order to be compliant with lean regulations and security, we have to purchase new computers to have Windows eleven. Um, Cooper gave me an estimate of like thirty-six thousand six hundred and twenty. Um, but like I said, come to May, I wanna see where I'm at in my current budget, and then possibly we can kick those out, and I won't even need to do that next year. Um, we need new carpet, um, I know I talked about this last year as well. Um, as the weather's changing now, and the humidity comes in, we get speed bumps in our carpet, and it's a tripping hazard, so.
Inside the court, or?
It's inside the, the, especially the lower level of the clerk's office, like where you come down. It's really, the whole hallway is just like speed bumps, and, because when they did this, you figure this carpet has been there a very long time. It's just on cement, the glues come unstuck, and it's just, and the humidity makes it way worse. Um, so I haven't, didn't go out for quotes, but they took the money out, so I haven't done anything yet, but it's definitely in very bad shape. It's a tripping hazard, and I just don't want anybody to fall, especially a woman, or somebody to catch their heel and go face-first, cause then we'll have bigger issues on our hand. Um, and also, the next thing was, we need a new work program van, um, whether we lease it or purchase it. Our current van is a two thousand six, the floor is rusted out, and right now the floor is being reinforced using plywood, so.
What are you using the van for?
Well, we have a work program, but we don't take them out very much, cause the, the van is not safe, so they do things around the building. They might go to the library and do some things around the building. Um, Bill Duckert, I don't know if you know who Bill Duckert is, but he, um, does this, and we do it on a Saturday, so we can get people to come out and help, maybe tidy up parks, streets, do that type of thing, but the van is not safe, so we can't really transport a bunch of people. And we don't want a lot of people meeting us at certain locations, because they shouldn't be driving majority of the time, because they're here because they probably don't have a driver's license and what have you, so we're just trying to. Um, we don't charge fees for them to be in the program, but it takes off for their fines and costs, um, to try to adjudicate their cases, so we can close them out, um, but they have to do so many days in order to, how do you guys?
It saves money on incarcerating them. They do ten days in jail.
Mm-hmm.
The city gets billed.
Yeah, and then the city, it's forty-five dollars a day for incarceration at the jail, so if we can try to keep them out of jail, yeah, that's. That's why I was looking, um, at my deal prices, they had some certain things, but again, I didn't go shopping yet, it's kinda early, so we'll go shopping. I think a lease would be.
Sometimes it would've been getting better deals just off from the dealership versus my deal.
Yeah, well, that's why I said I was gonna have him, the work program director, go to the dealerships. I can check on my deal, and we can kinda see what was going, but I'm thinking with a lease would be obviously the cheaper, and maintenance and all that would be included as well, so maybe like a three, five-year lease even, you know, rather than a two-year lease. Um, and purchasing, on my deal, they average between like fifty and sixty thousand to buy, and then you have to detail, you have to get the, we still have to, you know, get the wording on it, get the safety lights.
Cheaper to get it for two years, like I just got a car, two years was, I think, seventy bucks a month cheaper than having it for thirty-six months.
Oh, okay, I mean, we'll definitely shop around and, you know, see what kinda people we can, will help us out in the dealerships.
How's that furnace going? I know you're not, you're not using it anymore, but, uh, I know we, we talked to Tifa last time, and.
Well, air conditioner is hot today, and our air conditioner's not working.
Not working?
So now it's about eighty-five degrees in our building today, and this is only April, so I can only imagine what's gonna be.
Oh, the, the Tifa director, we talked to him last week, and he said he's gonna look into it.
Okay.
They have some money they might be able to have.
Oh, that'd be fabulous. Um, I know Johnson Controls is coming out tomorrow to take a look and see, because at the, about this time last year, our air conditioner went out as well, and Johnson Controls came out, and they did a Band-Aid fix. It was like nineteen thousand dollars or something, just for whatever they had to do, so now we're not even a year later, and here we are again, so I can't. This, this, this has been here since two thousand and three, so it's our original unit.
What, 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 what Hamas said was, if we can use the wording that, um, we're not replacing, I forgot what it was, but if we can say things like, there is a a use for it, that, that people can use, then, then we can, we can get a new one through Tifa. He said he was gonna look into it. He brought up to the firm board.
Is it possible for you to, uh, connect with them?
Yeah, and I asked, actually tried to get him to do my carpet too, so I had already talked to him about carpeting, but he said he cannot do that.
What does, what does it cost for the carpet?
I don't know, because we have to also, you have to, it's down in the clerk's office, so we have a gazillion cubicles. So the cubicles, we're gonna have to have two costs, carpet as well as a cubicle, tear down, place back up. There's electric, you know, electric in each cubicle, so I was just, I mean, I'm gonna try to see what we can do, or who we can find, or somebody who's local, maybe, who wants to, you know, help us out with this, but I hadn't gone out, cause the money was there, and I was like, well, if.
Reach out with me too, I, I mean, I can talk to some.
Yeah, and I said, if we find some connections or something that would, you know, be beneficial.
Maybe we can even get somebody to donate it.
Yeah, those are shelves, we're cubicles. I talked to Mike, I reached out to Mike as well, because I knew he just got the carpet done and all that. He said that was specific to libraries, so.
And, and the library is funded by itself.
Yeah, yeah, but I did reach out to him, cause I knew he, you know, he got a pretty good deal, he did this, I was like, hey, let me piggyback and see what's going on, but he was like, they're specific.
So how big is the area, I think? Porchage wise, it's big.
So it would be down, I don't know, I could probably have somebody get me the blueprints or what have you and find out.
Maybe one-third of Justice.
Yeah, we're about, yeah, cause that's what our portion is, one-third of, you figure the police department has a larger side, we have the whole lobby, and then we're on the backside. Upstairs needs to be done, but the bu- the lower level, one hundred percent needs to be done, so. Well, that's, you know, we thought about that as well, and said, but then you have, you know, it's, the carpet hides the dust, hides the dirt, and, you know, you do that, as opposed to somebody's gonna have to be sweeping and mopping and cleaning the floors all the time, so. Yeah, so. Yeah, and then you do, or, or we thought maybe getting them, just have some runner rugs, you know, in the high-traffic areas or what have you. Um, we, we talked about it, we just have to reach out and see.
Yeah, I know, but we have to figure it out, because, like, this is the second year you've come to us, same issues, same complaints, and like, really, nothing has been done for you guys, and I'm sorry that, that's, I'm sorry that's happening.
Yeah, I, and I know, I mean, money's been tight, and what have, you know, with, with everything and the budgets, and this is, you know, what we have to do, but after last year, it was like, okay, we want it, we wish we can get it, we're kind of off the wish list and on the need list at this point, so.
You know, and like, I hate to beat a dead horse, but it's like, money wasn't tight.
Yeah.
We had twenty-four million dollars of market money, could've used that money, could've done, you know, certain things with the first ten million dollars.
Yeah, and, and also, but I have a positive note, I mean, where we are with our projected revenue, um, we are closer to our target this year than we've been in many years. We have, hopefully, we'll have a good three months, you know, and then we will hit that, but also, kudos to Police Harmon, cause obviously there, um, there's more filing. Obviously, there, um, there's more filings, caseload's gone up, so obviously caseload goes up then. That affects our revenue because we can't collect without any cases. So I think that's it for this. You have any other questions for that part?
Can you tell me what the amount is that you guys have so far in revenue?
Um, I have. Number revenue right now, do you want to give you that? Sorry, here. So I have my, we're, as of right now through March. We're at one million, seven hundred sixty six thousand, six hundred and five. Our target is two million four. Um, so we have three months to go. If we can feasibly make two hundred and twelve thousand for the next three months of the ci- money that comes to the city. Um, then we will meet our target. Um, I went a little lower. I said, let's go one hundred and seventy five for the next three months. We'll be just shy of our um revenue target by like one hundred and eight thousand.
Let's get there.
I know, hey, and we're trying, we're trying, but I did see, I mean, last month we had the best. Um, we've been, let's say, averaging a hundred and fifty thousand with the ordinance, traffic and criminal fines that come to the city. Um, last month we did have a good month. It was two hundred and forty thousand for just the traffic criminal and ordinance. Um, obviously probation fees hit and miss. Um, we have a lot of things that have changed legislatively with probation. So we can't do a whole lot. And then civil, obviously, and there's not any revenue in civil. Our civil is very, our caseload went up, but our civil fees, you don't get any revenue with civil.
Yeah, we don't want any more civil law fees.
No, we don't. We, you know, but that's it. But with the caseload like through March for this fiscal year. Right now, as of March thirty first, including traffic, criminal, parking ordinance and civil, so the whole kit and caboodle. We're at fourteen thousand, five twenty nine. We ended last year through June at fifteen thousand, nine hundred ninety. So we're doing better than we were, but the year prior to that, we were at nineteen thousand, eight forty two. And our revenue was two point five, almost two point six million, so. It goes to show, you know, the caseload, so we, we go hand in hand with the police department.
What would the courts do without you, Michelle? Like, you need to be the next judge overnight.
Oh, Judge and I have been here just about the same amount of time. Maybe I got you a couple more years on you, I think. Yeah, so I think, um.
So every time somebody goes works in the work program instead of getting incarcerated, the city gets money instead of the city paying out money.
Right, yes. Mm-hmm, absolutely, because yeah, the, it's saving on the jail bill for one, because the jail bill adds up really quick.
I'm gonna go wash my hands.
Okay.
I have no more questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's get in contact about that.
Okay.
I'm gonna figure out some programs.
Okay.
Reach out to our, our state reps.
Okay. Maybe, yeah.
Give us, give us, give us all five hundred thousand. We're not even asking for much.
Oh, yeah, the two sixty fund, which is.
This, they're, the Trump administration.
Age forty one.
Forty one. Holding up all the Department of Justice grants.
Yeah.
OJ grants.
Mm-hmm. So we have the um, two sixty fund is the M I D C, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. Um, which pays for our court appointed attorney. So it's a grant we go out for. Um, we have, um, we're in the process of, actually, I've been working with the RMAC office, who's our regional office, who handles nineteen district courts in the area. We do a co- um, compliance plan. She just submitted um the numbers of what she is so projecting for us. And it's um going to be two hundred and eighty five thousand, five hundred and five, which will cover the attorneys. As well as the court officer who works for M I D C. He's a grant funded position. Um, so that is what is um anticipated. So the recommended budget that Shannon has, I thought about two fifty six, which they actually gave us a little bit more. Hasn't been voted on with the M I D C. We just had to submit it. So they don't do their meetings. Um, they have their own commission and their own meetings and council. So that will be taken to them and for a vote. So far, everything we've submitted over the years, we haven't had any rejections. Um, because the numbers speak for themselves. We've been paying that many attorneys. Our cases have gone up. We've been having to pay more attorneys. Um, so actually, the, the grant fund, what we currently have will be a shortage in it. So they're actually giving us, well, we've asked for it, an additional eighty thousand dollars on top of that two eighty five. Just to reimburse us for the money we're gonna spend this current budget. Yeah, and the state budget years, October one to September thirtieth.
So I don't understand. If you requested two fifty six, what did they give you two hundred if it's uh, the grant is paying for it?
I don't know.
So if you, if you use the whole grant, it still stays with us or we lose the whole money?
The money is, it's pre-funded, so it carry over. So let's say I ended my unexpended year. I have to do a um financial statement at the end of September. Um, I have to say, in the past, I've always had a plus. Like, I've always had, like, so say the two hundred. Excuse me, the two hundred thousand was granted to us and we were awarded that and I ended with twenty thousand to the positive. Then they would take that off and only give us a hundred and eighty thousand, so they would make it because that's what they awarded us. Last year I finished negative fifty three thousand, so they gave us in this current fiscal year. The reimbursement to pay ourselves back. So that is included in the two fifty six that we currently have this year. And then next year, um. We're hoping, you know, with, and getting the reimbursement again, and this is a pre-funded uh thing. They pay us quarterly. So we just, they just sent, I don't know whether we have it or not, but I do see they sent a sixty two thousand dollar payment. So we get payments quarterly after I submit my FSR quarterly.
That saves the court a lot of money too.
Oh, yeah, we don't have to pay for the attorneys any longer. We had to pay for all them out of our own budget before, so.
So, somebody's in custody, somebody goes back and talks to them, they plead, they pay their fine or make arrangements to pay and they're out.
Mm-hmm.
They're done.
We have an attorney every day, Monday through Friday, which is our house counsel, who is somebody, is on a rotation. We have at least one attorney who's in every, every morning. Um, to try to um enter into a plea on an arraignment, because if we can, if we can kick the case out at first time. That's very beneficial and that's kind of what they want. Um, I didn't bring those numbers with me, but um out of maybe three hundred arraignments, we only had like maybe ninety one pleas at arraignment. So they're going to a pre-trial. So when they go to a pre-trial, we appoint another attorney. The house counsel doesn't keep it. They get a new attorney for the duration of their case.
Ninety one that plead out of three hundred, that's like a third plead out and are done.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, and if we could get that higher, then, then actually there'd be probably less spending. Because the house council's paid a, a flat, like a, a certain amount every day, you know, that, that the region, that M I D C has approved.
Who does that? Who's some of the attorneys that do that? Is it still?
In our court appointed, we have um our house counsel, we have Mohammed Saba. Um, Donna Malouf, Zach Holman, Oday Moreau, um. Danny Batar. Yes, John Greciani, we have Zainab Hamud. Um, yeah, so and then we have another list when, uh, those are just like our house counsel. And then we have, when it goes out to the regional office, we don't appoint attorneys. Everything is done. They fill out a, an attorney request form. It goes to the regional office, the regional office appoints an attorney. The court is not to have any part of that whatsoever, so there can be no, um. Yes, no conflict. That's the point of M I D C too. They wanted to take the courts out of it. So it's really not a court grant. It's really a city grant, but. Um, I've been handling it and been inside, so I know the ins and outs, so I just try to keep track. Um, and then we have, um, are you fine with that? Are we all good? Okay, so we can move on to the building fund, which is fund one oh five. That is basically. Um, expenditures of the M I D C. I really don't know how to explain the expenditures. I mean, they get.
Okay, Mariana, you memorized the budget. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and so we have, um, so the building fund is um fund one oh five. That is basically, we take ten dollars from each moving violation or misdemeanor.
I'm sorry, what, what page is that?
Uh, that is on page thirty five.
But Mariana, for page forty two, I think it's the same thing, just needs to.
Okay.
You take ten dollars for maybe moving fine?
So we do ten dollars from every moving violation, um speeding, red light, disobeying traffic signal, change lanes, what have you. And any misdemeanor on the, when it's paid, ten dollars from the initial fine comes to, we designate it to this building fund. And the building fund is to help pay for the Tifa bond, so the bond for the Justice Center, so that goes into that. So when we do my transmittal every month, um, I see how many moving violations we had and how many misdemeanors we have. And then it's ten dollars from each of those breakdown and it gets put in my transmittal letter. And then it gets moved over from the GL account from the revenue over to that portion, which is not much, but, I mean, they. Last year we finished off at seventy four thousand, one thirty. Right now, currently, we're at forty five thousand, nine seventy. So we're probably on target to get sixty thousand that was, was on there, I'm guessing. Um, because we're doing a lot more. It doesn't count for do- for parking tickets. So if there was trash day parking, regular and proper parking, double parking. And ten dollars doesn't come out of those fees. The fine and cost just go to the city for those. Okay? Any other questions? I think that.
You did a great job, Michelle, again. Uh, you, you outworked Judge every time. I think the last time was Judge uh Turfy, this time it's Judge Pachi. Didn't have to say anything.
See, I tried to make it easy for them.
I, I will tell you, we, we would like to see Judge, um. And I obviously it starts with you guys, but we want to see an increase in some of our fines. We don't know if pass the resolution to Ross and then you guys just start enforcing, making sure.
The, the fines are up, they're set by um the state. So we have to do within the recommended fines and costs that are set by the state, so we can't just skyrocket our.
Well, I don't, I don't mean that, but I mean, like, I, I'm talking like ordinance fines. I don't mean.
That is something that you guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In backs, I have a note here. So in June of twenty twenty three, the ordinance fines and schedule change by city attorney has been presented. They have to change the ordinance because it's part of the ordinance and then um city council approves it. So we went up fifty dollars across the board on all of those. So um, that would stem from you guys. We don't have a say in that because it's an ordinance.
Okay, municipal civil infraction too.
Those are the municipal civil infractions. Yeah, those are all ordinance violations. So that doesn't, the court doesn't set those fines and costs. Um, and the state doesn't set those fines and costs. That comes from within.
Thank you. By the way, Councilor Michelle was acknowledged uh last month uh for Women's Month. For her contribution to the city for leading an outstanding department. So thank you again and congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You guys have a.
I remember the first time doing my budget hearing, Michelle walked in and I said, oh nice, what do you do here? I had no idea.
Well, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Judge. Have a great day, guys.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So next up, we're gonna have the C D B G department, which is page thirty three on the budget. And page eighteen on the personnel page. We have Director Saad to go over her department. Director, good evening. How you doing?
Evening. Doing well. How are you?
You put your mic actually out and then hold it close. You can just take the actual mic out, yeah. Good time, man.
Better?
Much better.
Okay. Okay, so um if you guys are unfamiliar, which I'm sure you guys are very familiar with our allocations, they do come from HUD. So as of now, we don't have our HUD allocation, but this is just a projection based off of last year's budget and last year's allocations. Um, so I'll break that down a bit for you and then if you have any questions, feel free to ask at the end. Um, so I'll reintroduce myself. My name is Lael. I'm the director of the Community and Economic Development Department and uh today I'm presenting the draft budget for program year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. So um through community surveys and outreach, we've identified key priority, priorities such as housing rehabilitation. Code enforcement, senior and youth services and neighborhood revitalization. So our proposed activities and budget overview. Uh, general program admin, we've set aside two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty three dollars, which supports. Compliance, planning and oversight. Uh, public service activities. We have set aside one hundred and sixty two thousand, three hundred and forty seven dollars.
Try to cut you off. Are you reading something that we can, can be shared with us?
Thirty four, thirty two?
No, thirty three.
This is just a script. Yeah, I can share it.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Do they have a personnel page too?
Yeah, page eighteen.
Yeah, community and development. This looks like it is there. Harry, page eighteen only has one. Is that because the rest are part-time?
Yes.
Yeah, so our staff, um, we have three part-time employees. Yep. Um, so yeah, I'm just gonna go over what I have as of right now, what we've uh drafted into our annual action plan and then. Um, we'll go over the, yeah, the general ledger. So, um, yeah, for our general program administration, as mentioned, about two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty three dollars. Which supports compliance, planning and oversight and then public service activities, one hundred and sixty two thousand, three hundred and forty seven dollars. Which includes senior services and fair housing center of Metro Detroit. Uh, we typically set aside six thousand dollars um every, every year for the fair housing center. And then the remaining allocation, uh, which will be approximately seven hundred and three thousand, five hundred and five dollars. This will support housing rehab, code enforcement, uh, and any potential new partnerships to expand services and support code remediation. Which is something new that we've been thinking about. Uh, this also makes room for any new projects or, you know. Any, any RFPs that we send out for, for potential projects that will be in place of what we've spent for the Van Houten um park project. So we are also exploring partnerships with local organizations to enhance our reach and impact. And evaluating opportunities to increase funding for housing services, especially those tied to code violations. So that's basically what we're doing right now. Um, that's what I have now for the annual action plan. Um, and then we can move on to.
Appreciate your efforts in putting this together. Here we do.
Yeah, I try. Yeah, they, these are all estimates, so it is.
So basically the budget that's presented.
Take the mic, please.
So basically the budget that was presented to you was calculated based on estimates, so the numbers that she's presenting is gonna be slightly different. So we can update the numbers based on what she is presenting to you, um, as this budget was created before the action plan was created.
Yeah, this is the most updated that we have.
Yeah, well, you guys can email that to us, to all the council, we can publicize it to.
So uh, just as a reminder, the C D B G budget doesn't really get set until October. Um, so there's gonna be public hearings where everybody's gonna be invited. Uh, but again, for budgeting purpose, it is important to, to have just the estimates in there, but this are not the actual, actual numbers that are gonna be proposed in the end and approved by HUD.
Thank you. But if you're likely to uh forward the action plan to you, then please do so.
Yeah, we can also forward, um, we also have the draft annual action plan right now, so I can forward that to you as well if you want to look through it. Um, if that will help anything, it gives like kind of a further breakdown of what we plan.
Are we working on any grants currently? Can we find any grants right now? Because we just had the Justice Center have their. Um, their meeting where they anticipate needing, or they don't anticipate they need. They went from a wish to a need.
Hmm.
Uh, for new carpet.
Hmm.
And, you know, I know in the past, the C E D D department always went above where, where like if we needed a grant, they're out working on it. You know, if there's anything you can work on for us currently, assist us in maybe capturing that. There are some things in the police department. Today, we just uh sat through a presentation uh to, to update our AI programs.
Hmm.
And so if there's anything, Mossad, that you can find to assist us, um, I know, not economic development, but we're pampered. For so long, where Mr. Jamal, former guy, uh, director, used to do C E D D, also used to do grants. I don't know Hawaii, what he did.
Yeah.
Um, and he was good at it.
Right.
Uh, I know Mariana's not in your head, but he did. Uh, so if.
So just as a reminder, our current funding scout is uh Waitrim, so it's Funding Scout. And they have been reaching out to every department, asking for all the needs that they have. So I know that they've been working diligently on that and particularly right now, we're in the appropriations period for all of the earmarks. So we've submitted to every single one of our representatives for that. Um, a lot of those are infrastructure based, which are the harder ones to find grants for, so.
But we can apply for like the hard ones and the easy ones, you know?
It's just, there's not a lot of funding available for capital improvement, so. So again, they're looking at everything. We're applying to everything that we possibly can.
Have we received anything from Waitrim and, you know, our funding scouts? Have we gotten any money from them at all? If so, can you give me a sum?
So we have about thirty-five active grants right now. Again, most of these grants are reimbursement grants, so as you spend the money, you get reimbursed for it.
Well, if you don't got the money, you spend.
So you, the council typically approves that when the grant is approved, and then it's budgeted during budget season.
You're right, the council will approve that, but what's the administration?
So a lot of them have already been approved and budgeted. So we received two million dollars for the water projects that we have going on right now.
I don't mean to interrupt you, I swear.
It's okay.
Question is, the adminis- not the council, administration presents something to us. Administration knows the day-to-day numbers. So if the administration knows we have no way of funding this, don't put it before the city council and say, well, the city council, you guys approved it.
We, we wouldn't do that, sir. I, again, the grants that I'm referring to are from water, and you do have the funding in water for those.
That's great, and I love that. Maybe we can borrow for other projects like parks and, and, you know, capital improvements, or maybe finding things for DPW.
The thing is, I realized about funding, they don't focus, uh, that they don't focus anything on grants outside of water infrastructure or CSCOs, because I've never had them come to us and say, here, we, we got your grant or park or something.
They've applied for grants for parks. We haven't been, uh, awarded those. Uh, but definitely, we have applied for them before. We've applied for them.
We're off topic, let's talk on Director Saad's, uh, budget. I'm sorry, I was just kind of in my thought.
No, you're fine. It's definitely things that I've thought and considered before. And, uh, I have been in the process of reaching out to other entities. I have, uh, connections at Wayne County as well, who have been, um, helping me to kind of generate, um, ideas, connecting with potential grants. Uh, his name, yeah, yeah. And, uh, also, I'm not sure if you know Dave, Dave from, from Wayne County, um.
Which Dave, Dave Kneecik is a great.
Oh, I forget his last name, but, is that his name? Yeah, so, um, I've been going back and forth with him. Um, and, and we've been, um, you know, he's been connecting me to a lot of people and, and things. So I, I have a lot of ideas, a lot of different ideas, not even just, uh, regarding infrastructure, but for.
You know, I, and I'm sorry, I don't know if it's true off, so Dearborn actually reconstructed their entire CEDD department.
Yeah.
And they made the business liaisons out of that department.
Yep.
And they've like reconstructed it, and it's been very pivotal in, in the community the last four years. Something maybe you should look into.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, I've, I've mentioned before my, my plans for revitalizing, um, Warren Avenue and things of that nature, so that's definitely long-term.
Or maybe Van Born.
Yeah, there's a lot.
In Warren Avenue, it is, uh, is a DVA district.
Yep.
Yeah, I would capture any money though.
Yeah, so I, I think it would be, I think it'd be good.
Not from the county.
Guys, guys, it is. The Empala Co created it as a DD district, and that's why you can have smart buses to come through that department. And, and yes, it is. I promise you it is. But we just haven't captured any tax time because we never followed through with it. But the truth is, it was designed to, like the benches on the side, the certain follow-up trees.
How can we follow up and capture that?
We need a master plan first. We've been waiting on a master plan for four years, saying that. Or, Lael Saad, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Yeah, well, um, definitely, definitely something that behind the scenes, I've been, I've been doing my research on, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll keep you guys in the loop for sure.
And share this, uh.
The script?
Yes.
Yeah, I can send you guys an email.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay.
So, if there's no more questions regarding CDBG, we are gonna be moving on to the Department of Public Works, starting with the Highway Department. That is gonna be page twenty-three on the budget. Yeah, see you, Mr. Dancy.
You want to.
And on page fifteen on the Personnel Page.
We just, we just wanna look at overtime. That's how we wanna make sure that there's enough overtime for them.
Is that twenty-three?
Yeah.
It's twenty on the personnel.
Twenty-three on the.
Twenty-three.
I'll dive on it. Uh, ordinance. Twenty-four on the budget, fifteen on the Personnel Page.
Share always with me, because you gave me the asterisk.
Oh, by the way, just take all of it.
Where's Personnel Page?
All right, so right now, budgeted for, uh, Highway Department, looks like we total up at fifteen. From all of my experience and knowledge and talking to both employees, administration, neighboring cities.
What are you talking about right now? I'm sorry?
Oh, just the Personnel Budget here. Labor force.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
In person.
Okay, go ahead.
So, at a, at a minimum, I'm thinking, we're really, I mean, if we wanna function a little bit better than we are currently, we really need at least sixteen people in the field, which would put us at. Highway, we have five heavies, five lights, and four labors.
Is this thing fifteen people total?
Yeah, this is total, so.
Highway.
Just highway. Yeah, just highway department. But if you think about it, that's, I mean, it's taken me, our two highway supervisors, which are vital, the nine, ten, eleven, those are the eleven in the field. And then one clerk, one out of the two that are up front, so. I mean, you have, between me, the two superintendents.
What do you need?
You, we need to add another, at least at a minimum, another light and two labors to the, if you wanna get to sixteen in the field.
Two light, two labor.
That would at least, at a minimum, get us to sixteen in the field in the event that we, uh.
Get about two hundred thousand minimum, without, uh, longevity. Question is, are we gonna be able to find these employees?
No, not at the rate we pay them. No.
Well, that's the thing. You're not gonna, we're gonna budget for, we're not gonna find the employees. Let's find the employees. If we do, you could do a budget amendment, bring them. How does that sound?
I mean, yeah, and we're trying to, I mean, with our new HR department, we have started to get in some applicants. It's difficult to pay them when we pay them sixty to seventy percent of all the neighboring communities, but we'll try.
I know, so. Yeah, but you know what, you know what neighboring communities don't do? Offer the pensions that we offer, the longevity that we offer.
Five days is set off four days.
Yeah, the, the full time is only thirty-two hours.
Help me find them, man.
Or look, I mean, I, I mean, if, if, if they're willing to come out and renegotiate, we'll go to forty hours clock in, clock out, make fifty grand.
I agree. That's why I suggested right when I got here. It didn't work yet.
I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready for that all day. That, that'll save the city. How about this? Take away the longevity, say, we don't have to give you all these type of longativities, and, and we'll, we'll come out right now, we'll, we'll give them sixty grand.
Just for discussions at a later date, but.
You're basically paying them eighty.
Right now for, uh. But I'm just putting in like what I feel at least should be requested.
Budgeting it one more for you.
Whatever were, I mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, Madi. Uh, we need to figure that out. Let's, let's, let's increase it to sixteen. Would you like, uh, general labor, or do you want a light equipment operator?
Yeah, we increased the general labor here one. So then, I mean, ideally, we'd have five, five, and four.
Cause right now, general labor, you only have one.
No, there's two. You're looking at the third position's got one.
Oh, okay. You wanna pick that up one?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, five, five and two, five, five and four would be ideal, but right now, we're at five, four, and three. I guess we're heading in the right direction. Now we gotta find these employees that'll work here.
Are we budgeting for any of them that are not here?
Right now, we currently have.
How many do we have currently budgeted for? And how many do we have?
No, that's what we currently have budgeted for, right? Twenty, twenty-four.
We're budgeting for fifteen right now. Do you have fifteen currently right now?
No. We got four heavies, two lights, and two labors working right now.
Hey, I understand. I said, I wanna know. Are we budgeting for anyone that, to potentially hire? Are these all filled positions currently?
No, we're not fully staffed yet. So we got, we're short one heavy right now, we're short.
No, no, I know you might be short. I mean, they could be on like FMLA or leave or whatnot. I mean, like, do we have funding set aside to be able to pay you if a new person comes in for these? How many employees are currently in the Water Department?
Highway, hold on.
Highway, I'm sorry, the Hockey Department.
We, we, let's see, four, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve.
Okay, and we're budgeting for fifteen?
Yeah, so we're.
So we're budgeting for three additional, so adding another one, it, it doesn't make any sense for us. Until you find, you hire the three and get the fourth one in there. Once you can fill your full staff, then we'll add an additional employee to it.
Yeah, that's fine. I, uh, when we do these requests, my job's to tell you what, kind of what we should be at.
Yeah.
And where we.
Leave it at twenty instead of fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's leave it at fifteen.
So, yeah.
That's okay. Leave it at fifteen. Let's make sure that our, our, let's get with our HR director and fill these positions. And halfway through the year, if you're like, hey, man, I'm able to get another employee, we'll up it up to fifty thousand and get you that other employee.
That's a goal, man. What do you want, you want me?
Yeah. We're not, we're not gonna budget for sixteen, we're gonna stay at fifty. You okay?
Yeah, you wanna go down all these? Can we just read through, or are we answering questions here? Yeah. Salaries, this is basic math. By what we got, we pay everybody less than they should, but that's all right. Um, part-time, we don't have anything budgeted. Overtime, the amount of work we have relative, just basic numbers, relative to the actual employees we have.
Part-time, what do we have for them?
Zero. I don't need part-time work in highway. We need full-timers.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was thinking overtime, okay?
Oh, yeah. No, no. Part-time, I don't see any reason to budget anything part-time in highway, really. You need full-time work and.
Okay, overtime. Let's talk that.
So overtime right now is just, I mean, basic math, you got a twenty-four hour operation. I mean, right now, we've since just cut it off. So we either gotta change our expectations, or realize that if we have staff that, even if you say it's fully staffed, but we know it's understaffed, of course, they're gonna have to work overtime for pretty much any activity after you actually take out the emergency. So even if we spend the emergency time, spend the overtime, to my knowledge, it used to be budgeted at two hundred. Apparently, the budget didn't balance according to everybody, so we just cut it in half and said, now it should be that. So we can either.
Hold on.
Cut it way down to zero and just change our expectations, or we can actually get the task done that we need to get done.
Hold on. I, I mean, really, you know what? Look, you wanna cut, you know, really, overtime was. This guy's spending two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year, and we're giving him one fifty. Let's go to, let's go to two hundred on overtime. DPW is huge.
Water main breaks.
Well, you know, like.
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
So if we're not gonna budget for the sixteen and, and take it up eighty thousand, let's at least give them additional fifteen, take that overtime to two hundred thousand. And look, I'm gonna tell you right now, you're hearing it from me loud and clear, you are in charge of that overtime.
Agreed.
You better maintain that overtime.
Yeah.
So like, I don't want you to come back to us and be like, oh, hey, guys, I need a, but I don't know what happened. I don't know what happened. No, you need to figure that out.
Yeah.
So you need to be proactive. You need to be able to figure it out. You need to, you need to diagram this. Hey, I need to, I can find this many employees doing this much overtime at this much pace. This is how much I can give for the year. Figure that number out and do it. Yeah.
Dude, so let's go on the same page here, man.
But, but let's take that up fifty thousand dollars.
And right now, even this year, like, with Paycom, we haven't had ti- I mean, I haven't exactly had time to figure this out. A decent number of the highway overtime budget right now could be attributed to the water in the sense that when we had thirty main breaks a month with four guys fixing them, highway guys had to go out, salt, clear the road, because right, it's just blowing out and freezing. So there's a decent amount of highway overtime. We've had to call highway guys in just to haul material in and out during main breaks, and there's no way in Paycom to identify that. So that's part of, I mean, even if you wanna attribute like.
You're in Paycom.
Why highway's over.
Get rid of them.
So, if an employee or employees ever work for a different fund, the director can send a notice to the controller's office, and we can make a journal entry to reallocate those funds. Most payroll systems will not allow, uh, a single person to be part of multiple funds. And if they did, it would be very tedious, and the employee themselves could make a lot more mistakes. So in the case where any employee works for a different fund, my recommendation is the director just send an email to myself and the.
There you go. There you go. That's even easier. That's it. Move on. Easy. Good?
Main man.
You get that, though? That's just a task on the director, though.
Sure.
All right, but we just give you an additional fifty grand.
Go for it.
Yeah. Next up, now, now we're going to clothing.
Clothing, uh, this has been the first year we finally got uniforms in. Never seen a city that's supposed to be of this size. DPW guys have no uniform, so we finally got a program in place.
Are we getting also helmets? Are we getting helmets?
Yes. So I don't, those might come out of, uh, supplies, but the clothing budget, we're just starting to get invoices in. So it'll be easier to budget in coming years for how much that program is actually costing us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go down.
That's what I'm saying, is I can't ju- I don't know if it needs to go up, down, or if it's just right.
What, clothing?
First year we've started the training or the clothing program. These next few, I don't think I have any influence over. Hospital insurance, life insurance.
Supplies.
Supplies. Supplies went up.
Or who?
Yeah.
In all of the departments, you're gonna see a combination of supplies and material supplies, general ledger number, because they were used for the same purposes, which is supplies. Um, so you are combining, in this case, um, seven two eight and seven three zero. So eventually, seven three zero will not be.
Do me a favor. Can you take the supplies from thirty-seven thousand five hundred to thirty-seven thousand even? And add that five hundred dollars for clothing? So again, we're not changing the amount of money, we're just giving five hundred more dollars in clothing.
You got it.
You got that, Mehdi?
Yeah, I'm just making.
Would you be good? So we're gonna take five hundred dollars from the supplies, so it's gonna go from thirty-seven thousand five hundred to thirty-seven thousand flat. We're gonna take the clothing from thirteen thousand six fifty, we're gonna add the five hundred, which will take it to fourteen thousand one fifty, I believe. That new number will be fourteen thousand one fifty, because in the past, they used fourteen thousand seven fourteen. At least we're about off, about six hundred dollars. They're a little less than six hundred. And it makes up for, in case Director Dancy needs to spend more money in clothing. There?
Find out. Like I said, that's all in a, uh, program, so we don't actually, luckily, we don't have to, right now, we don't purchase. We get them washed. Everybody gets ten uniforms. They get washed every week, so we'll see what the invoices come out at. Uh, we down at emergency storm. Ten grand will get you about one, maybe two trees, so.
Emergency storm?
Yeah.
Isn't that what down we're at?
Yeah, seven three one.
This is in case of an emergency, a bunch of trees falls, we have ten thousand dollars, that's all we got?
That's what it says.
What do, what are you just talking about? Does it come with the playbook?
So again, this is based on the historical use, uh, for emergency storm. Um, it, it seems consistent with what we've been spending typically. We also have a contractual service for that, and the DPW employees are typically the ones that respond to that. So this is in addition to the employees responding to that. Um, and it's the, it's the additional, like, non-contracted items.
All right, thank you. Uh, road supplies? Is that for cold patches and stuff?
I believe that's what we bring the, uh, it def- that's one of the major ones, and that one runs us about, right now, cold patches up seventy-two hundred dollars per fifty ton. That's the minimum you can order. And that lasts us maybe like three or four streets, so.
Well, that's good, because we went up on that one.
Yeah.
Actually, twenty-five thousand. I'm okay with that. Street signs. Can we up this?
Uh, Director, I have a, I have a question about street signs. When a stop sign, something goes out from an accident, why does it take three months for it to be pulled back up?
Labor force? I mean, I don't know if that's accurate. That may have happened once. I wouldn't say that was probably the, I would argue that's not the going average.
I'm not saying it's you that, cause you're here. It's been going on, like, there was one on Wilson and Dover that's literally been out for months, and you guys have a small.
Little tripod.
Tripod put on there. I just don't understand why you could, somebody can go out there and, and hook it.
Oh, we definitely go out there.
They're running stop signs. They're like crazy. People don't see it, because cars parked right in front of it.
The, uh, hey, if, if there's one, if you're gonna give up one example, I, yeah, I don't know why it'd be out there that long.
Your son have an email. You know, I'll tell you, this stop sign was added about four years ago when I first got a council. My, my father almost got struck there. It's right by my parents' home, and I, uh, I sent a video to the foreign police chief. Next day, he had a stop sign out, but here it is, it's damaged. It's been like three months in. It's been like three months and it hasn't, I mean, maybe nobody, maybe nobody told you guys. Maybe the police report didn't get to the D P W. I don't know. Maybe it's the overtime. But the street sign here. I, I would like to take this up.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I definitely wanna take this up at least.
Twenty.
I know, I know we're, we're limited on, on budgeting, but. This, this is imperative. I think street signs is, we can give this at least another five grand. You know, I really want to go another twenty grand, man.
Just make it twenty even then. I mean, I don't know. They just, they spent about almost nine so far.
Because we're not putting out anything.
Yeah, we don't. I mean, you guys still gotta send one or two guys out. Take out old poles, call them Mystic, put it in.
Or adding, or adding new poles.
We need to add new people to do it, but sure.
No, man, but.
Good.
All right, okay, let's take that four thousand dollars up, please. Or make it twenty even, yes.
And road supply?
Signs.
Or signs.
You know, I, I request that because I'd like to see a lot more stop signs added across the city. Public safety should be.
Yeah.
At its high.
Uh, contractual services. I guess you had dues members. There's nothing. Contractual services. Again, that's, I mean, that's what we use for most of the tree trimming. Um.
No, I think tree trimming has its own budget. Oh, it's online, I mean. Yeah, that's separate.
It is.
And I'll use that for some of the invoices unless you change them.
Tree, tree remove right there.
Contractual services, that is probably fine.
Look, the companies that we use that we potentially, uh, sign up with, like the Cutter Grass.
No, Kipon Grass is, that's its own line too.
Yes.
So what's it for?
So I know last year we used it to paint all of the highway road, I mean, sorry, the crossroads and the schools. Um, because we didn't have the machines to have our own staff do it with the right paint that doesn't vanish with the water. So when they painted all of those that was requested, um, it was done through our contractual company.
Do it?
They don't have the equipment for it right now.
Sure, we hired a company. We now strip the streets and get up. But I thought we paid that as a full invoice. Have you paid that? For like two hundred and?
Yeah, but that's contractual services. I mean, that's fine. But, okay.
I think they did streets and corners up to three hundred.
So this is what was last year, or so what about this year? I mean, for the upcoming year, we're gonna do the same thing?
Yeah, Ali Deep said every year you would get new stripe.
Hmm, I mean, yeah, if we don't need it, we don't use it.
I would assume a decent amount of that contractual services is hauling in and out of materials. Like, that's probably actually a lot of it. We spend a lot of money hauling in and out of materials, whether it be. Large trees that were taken down, whether it be sand, gravel, broken up concrete, wood. It's a decent expense, because you got, I mean, you're taking down. Yeah.
How much, how much I spend truckload?
We could look at the invoices. I can send you a couple of them. I'm sure we got, yeah.
To see the numbers and maybe we can go back out for a bit for that.
Yeah, I'd be all right with that.
City grass cutting?
So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure this is primarily used for city-owned properties, not all of our buildings that we maintain, because there's.
We are selling that city-owned property.
City-owned property. So I don't.
All the city grass cutting are on a different line.
Let's, let's get, let's get, let's get to. This tree ru- uh, remove. We're at a hundred and twenty-two thousand. We gave you a budget of one forty. You have until June thirtieth to figure that out. I wanna make sure that you're able to get to the one forty.
Oh, yeah. We can go, yeah, we can get to the one forty. Probably by the end of the month if we wanted to. So we'll make sure that, uh, that'll all be spent. Easy.
All right.
That one really honestly could go as high as we wanted to.
Why we have tree planting at zero dollars?
They don't have any.
We have a, I don't, we have a tree fund for that. And we use, that means a stone is a line item.
That's correct. There is a tree fund for it. There's a revenue that's specific for this purpose. When there's a need to plant new trees, you budget for it and you plant them. Um, at the moment, no requests have come in to plant new trees.
We're gonna have to, I mean, anytime you take down a tree, you gotta plant a new tree. So if you get a hundred and forty thousand dollars to remove trees. You need to at least have money to plant trees. We don't just remove them and leave them. No, we have tree removals.
So, yeah, there's been, I agree, there should be some money in there for tree planting. I think historically over the last. Few years. Any money that's been in there, they've tried to, uh, bid out and get prices to plant trees. Usually runs like six hundred dollars a tree to replant them, and then they try to get. A list of any residents that want a tree in their front yard and get it planted. But I think over the last, uh, how many years, they've realized that you, you gotta find some way to. Cut into some of the other over budgeted line items. So that just tends to be one that goes, you say.
Yeah, you know, you, you, you know, we can start doing. Let, let, let me tell you what we can start doing. We can start telling residents. We're gonna take down this tree, but you have to pay for the new tree.
No, we do that. Yeah.
That's what the ordinance provides for. Okay. Well, no, but if the tree is diseased, like, the resident shouldn't be like, why am I paying for it? But like, if the resident wants the tree taken down. You should come back and say, okay, we're gonna take down the tree, right? Because it's diseased, but you really wanna go, but you're gonna plant the new trees. It's gonna be six hundred dollars. Give us a check.
Yeah, but we don't take the tree down if it's not diseased and dying.
Right.
Well, sometimes if it's grown, yeah, you know.
Ruining the concrete. So actually, we do now. Uh, there was an ordinance passed by the council that does allow us to remove trees just because the resident wants it.
No, no, not us, not at our expense. You do that.
Not at our expense. No, at their expense, absolutely. Uh, but again, when you remove a tree from a particular easement, you can't plant this. The tree right there immediately, because there's still a stump, there's still a root damage. So again, finding the location to where to put the additional trees.
We wanna back, if you take a tree off an easement, you better plant me a new tree.
Okay, so then maybe that's something that the department needs to track, because I don't believe it's being tracked currently. And I don't know how long they truly need to wait to plant it in the same location, but I believe the soil needs some time.
Oh.
No, if I want to remove the trips, they beg for it with soil and then you plant a tree.
The, uh, right now, typically, we do try to do, uh, most people that want the tree removed don't want a tree there. We could just force them to do it, and we could start planting them. I would like that. I mean, we'll, we'll go out to bids, and we'll have to purchase a decent amount of trees.
That's not up to them. That's actually.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's the goal. Eventually, we're just gonna start to where any type of trees removed, we'll just plant a new one right there. You have to, yeah.
We get them donated by other tree.
What, they can go sycamores again?
No, no.
Yeah, somebody got a good deal on sycamores back like forty years.
My mayor's brother.
They must have had the discount deal on them.
I love one.
That's a plan going for, I mean, as we move into different budget years, to be able to just plant them right where they're at, regardless of the resident's preference. Uh, comp to expand, I don't know what that is. As much as we can.
I mean, you can leave it till we get a budget first, so we know.
This will go down to, I don't know what the eight twenty-four line item is. I don't think I have any influence over that.
What is that? Let's show you. What does that stand for?
No idea.
That compost?
Which one?
Eight twenty-four.
Uh, compact X.
Compost?
I don't know, but they have money in there.
Yeah, two hundred thousand.
What is that, Mehdi?
Uh, we'll look it up right now. We just want to come to them before.
They only use one sixteen so far.
Yeah.
Move on to the next one.
Move on to the next one? All right. Uh, motor fuel, I'm assuming that we can keep consistent. We did actually institute. Probably two weeks ago, we do have a flea tracking management system on the D P W vehicles now, so. Going through training right now, the I T director, Cooper and I are the only two that can actually access the program. See where vehicles are at, run out reports. Eventually, we're gonna get to the point where we'll be able to post. Where all the street sweepers were in a week, where the coal patch truck was in a week. Where the main breaks were, so we can access it right now, so.
Have the street.
At some point.
Have they started going out?
Yeah. So as soon as I can navigate the program well enough to be comfortable to send it out to both council, administration, and social media team. People will be able to look up and see exactly where all four of the street sweepers have been for a week if we've been out doing that. I mean, right now, the highway department has the ability to do pretty much one activity. At a time. So if we're out street sweeping, nothing's getting cold patched. If we're out cold patching, nothing's getting street swept. It's just, how many people we got?
Do we request to do it after the garbage gets picked up?
Oh, yeah, we're trying to, yeah. But for the, uh, motor fuel, we can leave it the same, because I think it's act, hopefully, we'll decrease a little bit with this flea tracking management. You can kinda. Keep a better track on vehicles. Insurance, underground tank storage liability, that's for the two tanks at the D P W. That actually, I think the prices on that went up. I think our invoices went up a little bit more. We have a. Third-party company that comes and inspects those underground tanks, and I think the invoice has got a little bit higher than. What it was, so.
Are those weird tanks? Are those fiberglass tanks?
Unaware. They might even be concrete tanks. They're old enough. They, to my knowledge, have never been replaced, so they might even be.
Yeah, they're probably metal tanks.
Yeah. So I would assume if, just to avoid going over budget or something, just to raise that. Five hundred dollars or so, because. It's something that we don't really control. I mean, we pay that third-party company to inspect the tanks. To keep the liability off us in the event there's any type of gas or diesel leaks. And I know D P W is not the only one that uses that. Everybody's got a card, so there are other departments that come in in the event they need to fill there.
So you said, uh, director, you asked them for five hundred dollars more?
I just noticed that the actual invoices have gone up from, I don't know, they send them, I think they do it monthly, and they've gone up twenty-five or fifty dollars.
Which department?
We're at the, uh, underground storage tank liability.
You wanna take it up five hundred dollars?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, if we wanna avoid it just arbitrarily going over, because the invoice is from the Phoenix Environmental Group. My knowledge has gone up a little bit.
Take it up five hundred dollars?
Uh, the underground storage tank, uh, liability is from Carico Maldean, and I believe it's twenty-nine hundred. I can go in, into a council, they won't get you the exact invoice amount for the year. Give me one moment.
Do the five hundred.
Just make it three thousand.
Yeah, those eventually should. Give it the three hundred, we could figure it out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, then?
I mean.
Yeah, make it three thousand.
Uh, so the comp expenditure is the any fund between highway and other funds, uh, as a highway does do work for other funds. And then the other fund do work for highway as well.
He's my hero. Nobody else watching.
We had traffic light maintenance.
You were in the heat page?
Yeah, that's, we pay, that's what we pay Wayne County for, so no need to adjust. Repairing maintenance equipment, obviously, every year. It's pretty factual that you'd have to increase it just based on the age of anything. We use that to. Purchase any odds and ends, either fix vehicles in the shop when we can. Change, cause break anything.
You're only, we, we gave you thirty-five thousand. You only used thirteen, less than thirteen grand this year.
No, that's for the, that was the traffic light maintenance. Yeah.
What is it?
He wants eighty-five.
Well, how much are we at? I mean, we've already only used forty-five thousand. You didn't even use half of what we gave you.
The projected is seventy-five.
We gave him seventy-five, he used forty-five so far.
Yeah.
That's more than half.
Okay, a little more than half.
We can, I use it. It'll be used by the. Soon as we want.
Okay, we got a month to use fifty thousand dollars, to use twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, that's the easy thing to do.
Let's use it. Let's not wait to the end and squeeze ourselves. Because then when it comes to this year, towards the end of the budget, or like, why do we need to give you more? You've only used twenty, you know, you've only used. Forty-five thousand six hundred and sixty dollars when we gave you a budget of seventy-five thousand.
How about repair and maintenance? Hey, I tried to come out under budget when I can, but we'll use it.
But I would rather, I mean, if you don't, if you don't need to use that, I'd rather put that money elsewhere, like overtime or something.
Oh, there's plenty of things we can use. Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of things we.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just, so that's why I'm okay with leaving it at seventy-five.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, and training's probably just fine at forty-five hundred. I don't know if we've used a lot of it yet. But springtime's when a lot of these guys, I try to send them to classes, and I think historically, the employees just have never been offered the opportunity to do it. As consistently, so.
You only use eleven hundred so far.
Yeah, that was two that went to one class, and I think there's. Two in May, I plan on sending a couple, so it might go up too. I mean, this year, we might spend a little less than that, but. I'm hoping we can put that into other parts of the budget this year, but going forward, we'll be spending that on training for employees.
Okay. Looks all about right.
That is it for the highway department. Next up, we're gonna have building.
Do you wanna talk about your? Sorry, I do wanna just mention the capital outlay needs, because if you see, there was a request of seven hundred and six thousand dollars. A lot of the equipment in the department is, um, either non-functioning or extremely old and needs replacement. So. Again, the director did his due diligence and made a lot of requests.
You know, you know, you know what we wanted to do? We wanted to use our money for that, and we weren't allowed to.
It's not allowed. I'm sorry.
Other cities say otherwise.
I'm sorry. If you find any legal person that allows that to happen, you can do that. And other cities have used it, as I've explained, from their revenue loss money, not from the restricted amount, which is what we have.
Related to the, uh, capital outlay, just some priorities as we have discussions regarding all this.
Sorry, uh, another item that I don't know why exactly the controller forgot to include in the budget, but I do recommend that. Um, we look into it, and I can give you the exact numbers, but it's the Safe Streets, uh, grant and the. Save Routes to School grant. So those are two grants that the council has already approved. And, um, we're currently working on those projects. So we're, we're spending a little bit this year, but there will definitely be remaining funds for the following year.
Yeah, how we, what do we do? Like, you're about putting.
So the Safe, Safe Routes to School is the Beach Daily Pedestrian Crossing that's being implemented. And the other one is a road safety audit program. That is being, that we're looking at, um, at Annapolis Street from Annap, from Annapolis Street from Telegraph to Merrick and Purdy Avenue to Annapolis Street and Van Born Road. So they're doing a road safety audit. I thought we weren't, what?
I thought we weren't using the money, and I thought we got a gr- a different grant for the crosswalk.
This is the grant that I'm referring to. So there's an M dog grant through Samco for the Beach Daily Pedestrian Crossing.
I love you guys. I love you.
Yes, sir.
When was this ring given?
Just recent.
Um, it's not that recent, actually. It's over a year old. There were some delays, because the owner of the property where we wanted to do the crossing went to the state and said that he didn't want it at that location. And one, so we had to find an alternative location to redo it, so a new engineering had to be done for it, so it was delayed a little bit. Um, but I know that currently the, the engineering and everything is in process. So. Again, I just wanted to point that out. If you want, we can come back later with the exact numbers, but this are the totals of what the grants are. And they both have a twenty percent match that is coming from local and major roads, not from the general fund.
That's all I got for the budget unless you just want a quick discussion on capital improvements.
No, okay, we.
Capital outlay, yeah.
We can go to the next budget.
Yeah.
The, the, you know, all it's gonna do is upset me, because I know that you need something, but we can't afford to give it to you. Maybe treasurer can figure it out.
So for the budget, is it okay if we budget the expenditures and offset it with the revenue since the grant has already been awarded? And, and when we present the new budget with all the changes that we're doing in the public hearings?
Well, the money, well, the money wouldn't come to you until you.
Complete the work, correct.
And then if we're using it from, uh. Uh, major local streets.
So, so the part that's getting reimbursed will be coming from the general fund until it's reimbursed. The match is coming from local and major.
I know, but then. Issue is, like, you see our roads? You know, like, I'd rather use, find a way in the general fund to figure it out than to use our, our local major roads.
Uh, so the amount, the total amount for the matches is twenty-one, nine thousand one hundred and fifty-six for the Beach Daily Pedestrian Crossing. And the other one is forty thousand dollars for the Annapolis, um, action, audit auction plan.
I mean, I guess, you're right. I mean, we're awarded it. We have to match. We're gonna use it from here. Forty-nine thousand, how much money do we have in our ma- major and local road?
Uh, we're gonna go through it in a little bit, but it's in the millions.
Okay, go ahead.
So next up, we're gonna do building maintenance, which is page ten on the personnel sheet and page eighteen on the budget. So next up, we're gonna do building maintenance, which is page ten on the personnel sheet and page eighteen on the budget.
So personnel wise, obviously, employees always tell me we need more, but I think we're all right with twelve. We maintain eleven old and outdated buildings with respective adjacent parking lots and ten accessory buildings and nine parks. So we have, in the field, right now, we only have one of the two crew leader positions. So right now, we are at a total of eleven being paid out of building maintenance, so we're still one shy. But I think once fully staffed, we'll continue to try to uh maintain as best we can. I think we need to. So salaries, those keep them the same, I don't think there's any contractual increases in there for this next year, it could be.
To direct to those building maintenance, all they do is just maintenance for the buildings that we have?
Oh, that'd be great if we could only do that, but we actually do anything and everything, building maintenance. Now, list of, I mean, the list goes on and on, anything from parks, events, trimming, removing pretty much anything from uh any of these accessory buildings, the comfort station, storage buildings, concession stands. It would be great if the building department could only focus on building maintenance, but they spend, it's really building and grounds. So they pick up over a hundred garbage cans around the city at garbage parks, all the city buildings along Warren, I think we have some that we pick up, so that takes a decent amount of labor hours to do that, so.
The custodian, where does he work?
Just here. Yeah, it's just here from three-thirty or four until midnight.
Can you?
No, let's see, part-time. Typically, we've used part-time to help with some of the mowing and weed whipping in the past. I say we keep it in there if we still have it in there, I don't, I don't anticipate using the part-time.
Looks like they took away the part-time, but they increased the overtime.
This one? Sure.
Did you hear me?
What?
It looks like they took away the part-time, but they gave you an additional thirty thousand on, on overtime, so.
Yeah.
But the reality is, it, you, okay, then we'll take away from overtime and give it back to the part-time, so.
No, I'd rather have no part-time.
Okay, so then that's why they gave you an additional thirty thousand in overtime.
Fair enough. Yeah, I'd rather. Yeah. Yeah. I think, I mean, the, the sooner this city, especially in the DPW, gets away from even budgeting and just not offering part-time, uh, full-time or no.
Yeah, well, we're, we're moved, we're moved past that one.
Uh, overtime, one-fifty, we'll make, we'll make it work.
But I mean, we have to, the reality is you guys used one-fifty-two last, last year, you guys.
No, till now, one-fifty-two.
Yeah, but last year, they spent a hundred ninety-nine thousand. You see two-hundred thousand last year, you just, you have to work it out.
Oh, yeah.
And you're down one employee.
We uh are not even gonna deal with Parkland Park this year, that'll cut out a large amount of overtime, cause a lot of it's spent on
Yep.
stuff being done in buildings that can't be done, painting while people are working, working in the drop-down ceiling while the building's open, and then mowing, a lot of times, you can't do.
Okay. Let's go to next, on the benefits.
Clothing, that's just fine, we can leave where it's at, they're on the same program. So based on the number of employees, we're gonna just budget it out so that obviously, the clothing program's paying for each one respectively.
Supplies, you're at thirty-six thousand currently. Are you gonna be able to use an additional fourteen thousand dollars in the next month?
Oh, yeah, there's probably some, does this incorporate everything that we've already submitted? Yeah. So this, yeah, this probably doesn't even incorporate all that's been submitted, so we're probably even already there, if not over, and like I said, a lot of those supplies, the building maintenance eats those costs, but it's for all the buildings and a lot of times other departments, so that might already be in the process of payment.
Okay.
Utilities.
Motor fuel. Motor fuel, activity, two thousand dollars.
Oh, uh, that's gonna go up all through the spring for mowing.
Yeah, but I'm gonna get, this this budget ends in a month, but true.
So with DPW, uh, what happens is that they fill out all the large tank that's in the facility, so you typically have one large expense where they fill the entire tank. Um, so that's typically how it.
Repair and maintenance, sixty-five.
So if we, I mean, honestly, this is just gonna continue to go up as all these buildings age. Um, a lot of that repair and maintenance budget is all the different buildings, to my knowledge, uh, the PD actually has some budgeted in theirs, but we it's been difficult to organize which ones come out of which, so if we wanna I mean, I'll keep it, try and keep it under whatever budget we make, but you, even this, you can make as high as you want, and it'll get used to hopefully start repairing some of these, cause a lot of these buildings.
Give me an example, which kind of building?
Go ahead, which, which building you want, City Hall? City Hall, we got buckets in the drop-down ceilings trying to keep leaks from falling in here, a roof that cannot be patched, this is what the contractor said, he literally walked up here, walked through and said, I would patch this, but there's nothing to patch it to. Um, so a lot of these things that will still be able, I mean, you can increase this as much as you want, cause these guys will come in here, whether it be doors that don't work, water tanks that don't work, they'll come in here and find a way to repair them as best they can. If, we can either put it into contractual services, but all of these expenses all over, even this individual city. HVAC systems, the whole city's chopped up, this building specifically is chopped up in such a way that the HVACs never functions properly, it was never designed to have all of these different offices, different rooms, so the HVAC is constantly having problems. So all these repair and maintenance, even for this building, it's just continuing to increase, they're stressing all these systems, the wind blows the wrong way, and you gotta go reset the whole system. So even as a this specific one building, I mean, you got a roof that's in need of plenty of repairs, that can't have any substantial repairs done to the roof, cause they can't, I've never seen, like, it can't patch it, you can't, anything. Yeah.
One of a kind.
Yeah, it's one of a kind here, man. You said, I don't know historically what it is we've spent on repair and maintenance, I'm sure we've been as frugal as possible, making only necessary repairs, that's kinda how these buildings have gotten to this point. But if you want my honest opinion, we increase it, but I understand a lot of times when we're looking at a budget, you can't just increase it, cause in my head, in my knowledge of the operations, I can already see that we need more to kinda keep these from completely falling apart, but.
That's why, that's why, that's why you hear your director.
Yeah.
To do some magic.
Yeah.
This roof was redone just a couple of years ago.
Not all of it.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, not, there's, there's certain portions of it, I think, were redone, there's, I don't know how many levels are actually on here, so. Obviously, the part that got redone, to my knowledge, is doing fine, but the rest of it's not, so. The hey, if we keep it at two-sixty-five, we'll do our best to come under it, we'll find a way here. Uh, the repair and maintenance for this nine-thirty-two, we're, uh, we're just combining nine-thirty-two and nine-thirty-one. Training, again, uh, this year it might be down a little bit, cause I think just in a change in direct, director, and I think previously DPW has just had either directors that really didn't pay too much attention to getting employees training, and then they were reluctant to ask or ask if they could go to things, so. This year, even if we come out under budget, I anticipate using all these in budgeting amendment to an overtime account, at least for this year, hopefully approved by council, so that we don't just absorb it back into the general fund.
So moving on to capital outlet, what did you request seventy thousand for?
Uh, we have uh roughly six, I've submitted estimates, and we've kinda gotten some pricing on it, so roughly sixty grand for a new crew leader van that is completely out of service, a second one that's right at the end of its service life. Uh, a leaf and debris vacuum, cause right now, these guys are handraking all these parks and putting them into a dump truck and driving them to the incinerator site or the DPW. That's about forty-eight thousand. Uh, we don't have a small bucket truck, it was uh decertified prior to me getting here, and we sent it to auction, cause there was none, no, it threw the we'd have to check with police to figure out exactly how much that auction for and be able to get it back in the proper fund, but we asked about a hundred and forty estimated for a small bucket truck. Right now, with no br, we can kinda split it with the highway department, but the highway department's bucket truck is down for hydraulic fixes, cause they all blew, and then the firemen had to come rescue the operator in it. So we did put in there uh request for a small bucket truck, like I said, a lot of these buildings, the DPW building maintenance guys can't actually get on the roofs to clean gutters, inspect, check units. We were hoping to repurpose the chipper that highway has, they should use a much larger chipper. Building maintenance could kinda repurpose the one chipper that this department has for park sticks, everything, it really reduces the amount of labor, so. One-forty plus another fifty, honestly, that's probably even lower than, lower than what I got now, but that's what those are for. So if you want my current calculations right now, we're at, Matt, Marty, do the math, one-twenty plus one-forty plus another fifty.
My director, for this fiscal year, you used almost thirty thousand for the capital outlet, you still have about good uh fifty-two thousand, so why don't you use it this year for that truck that you need?
Where are we gonna get the rest of it from? Usually, typically, they don't let you, hey, the price is seventy grand, I got fifty-two, can I give you the head, I'm gonna try negotiating, but.
No, did you say that's forty?
No, the, the crew leader van right now, like I said, we got one that is just sitting at the shop out of service. Um, I got the prices somewhere, probably my email, I think I submitted it to you.
Anyway, you still, you still have about fifty-two thousand you can work with for this fiscal year. Buy a truck or do whatever you need to do, no?
Remember, can I buy something? Marty told me I gotta, we gotta use it for the repair and maintenance.
Oh, this is capital outlet, what is it? Am I wrong?
So he's already over budget on repairs and maintenance, and given that it is coming into summer and a lot of the HVAC units are outdated, uh, part of the capital management that myself and Director Vanderflower are trying to do is scrape up as much of the extra money from the budget to the line items that are in severely needing of that, and building maintenance, repairs and maintenance is one of them. So if you use it for the capital outlay, then the HVAC units, unless you wanna do a budget amendment from the general fund fund balance, which I would recommend, uh, we are gonna be looking to take budgets that are available and move them into necessary budget line items at this point.
Okay, Anderson, thank you. Sorry, director.
Oh, you're all right, my main man, that's why we got Marty. Main man, I mean, I got excited for a second there.
Uh, any question on the, any question on the building?
I'm good.
Maintenance?
Okay, we're good.
Okay, so we are gonna be moving on to major and local streets, there I don't believe there's a personnel page, is there? There is no personnel page for major and local streets, and then a page number for the budget. Major street is gonna be starting at thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven?
Yep.
Wh- which department exists, you said?
Major streets.
This is, yeah, just the
Major.
Page thirty-seven out of fifty-seven on the budget, is this the last one for today, or still have one more?
Yeah, the biggest one.
Huh?
Water, water.
Slow down, guys, you're both listening.
Major, local, and water.
Uh, three, three more, okay.
Probably the water is the biggest one.
And major and local roads are allocated by the state. So we, we get a certain percentage, certain amount per mile for major and local roads, so there's not a whole lot we can really adjust in here for those two.
All right, you wanna go through?
You don't have to, okay, I mean, please stay.
Yeah.
I wanna go, I wanna go to local.
Loc, local's the same thing, so we should just.
Yeah, I wanna see it.
Oh.
I, I wanna look, I wanna look at local, can you show me the local? What page? Yes. What page is?
Page forty out of fifty-seven.
How much money do we have in this local?
So the beginning fund balance before the fiscal year starts would be two million fifty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-one, that's for the fiscal year coming up.
I wanna go for street repairs. Sorry about that. They have a hundred thousand dollars in just street repairs?
Hundred thousand dollars. That's a bridge, the street.
Where, where are you looking, what page?
All right, so if you go to page forty, you're gonna start seeing all the different aspects that have to do with our street repairs. It starts with professional contractual services at a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So that's. Who's that for? Way trim?
No, uh, that is for whoever we contract at the time, I believe right now, the only one that we have under contract is Mark Anthony. We have to go for contracts again, so Mark Anthony has some pending ones, uh.
Yeah, but this is for next year, so we already budgeted, and there's nothing for.
We don't have a bid for next year.
This, this is going for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-five has already been completed. You can't use them, things that were being done for twenty-four, twenty-five and pay them out in twenty-five, twenty-six. Twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, we have a contract with them, they did no services. Twenty-five, twenty-six, the contract that we, that we hired did no work for us to come into us in twenty-five, twenty-six and saying see, we're gonna have to pay them a hundred and forty thousand?
We haven't gone out for bids.
No, no, this is just a budget, but she, she's still have to go for a bid.
So the contractual services, if.
Correct, so last time we went out for bids for street construction, it was Mark Anthony, and it was in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. We amended the budget twice to incre, to include uh additional roads. One last year and one that was recently approved, I believe, in the last month or so. But we do still need to go out for bids again.
It's just a, so the estimate, but they're gonna have to go out for bids, so it might be less, it might be more, but just an estimate for now.
Okay, so if we do have an engineering firm, doesn't have to be way trim, could be any engineering firm.
We have an engineer, guys, we don't need to pay them. The whole point of, the, the mayor's saying, and, and I don't wanna be interrupted for a second, Marty, please.
I'm not, I'm not.
One of the things that we said was, you know, we bought the smartest man in the world, and, and we've in-house, and we've out, instead of outsource, we brought in our own in-house engineer. Why are we paying other engineer firms?
So one engineer cannot do every single.
Then get rid of the engineering and don't even keep outsourcing.
But the point of having an in-house engineer is to act as a liaison and an expert in the field, so when an engineer firm does come and tell you to do things, he can review and assist the city and ensuring that they make the best decision possible.
Turn forward.
Way trim is a contractor. You have to have somebody in-house so that when it does come to engineering tasks, he can review engineering tasks, you can't just hire an engineer.
It's like we have Flan Moran and we have Matty. So basically. You shouldn't have like me and Matty, you only have one of the two.
But I'm only one person. Once the department is fully staffed, we can come back on that. But in regards to engineering, council chair, in regards to engineering, you need to have an in-house engineer that helps with also the in-house building and engineering department and stuff related to that, that's where the engineer comes into play.
Mr. Beal, with all due respect.
Yes.
You're in charge of the controllers department, to tell me what the city needs to be able to pay two for, I'm, I'm not saying get rid of Mr. D, by the way, what I'm saying is, we do not need to play, pay way trim. I, I just want you to know something, you drive down Wilson, you see the road? Five years, seven years, seven years way trim, and it looks like crack. Fire station, falling apart after two thousand and three, way trim. Everything you're looking at is way, that's great, keep Alidib. Maybe instead of paying way trim, I hear two engineers.
Yeah, honestly, if you want to, you could have a five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar engineering department that have in different.
You know, Marty, do me a favor, can you tell us exactly how much we paid way trim so far this year?
Well, not now, not now, but whenever you have a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
But also, I just wanted to remind you that we did recently go out for engineering bids, and we now have two firms that could provide as needed engineering services, it's not just way trim. So another reason that we use way trim and other facil, other engineering firms is because again, we do not have a five hundred thousand dollar engineering department, we don't even have the software that's necessary for us to develop the plans to do construction like this type of construction and roads. So you absolutely need a contractor with our current staffing and our current software in the department, we haven't even been able to hire a GIS coordinator. Um, so we haven't even been able to hire a GIS coordinator. Um, so we haven't even been able to hire a GIS coordinator. So again. It's one of the positions that was requested in the engineering department. Yeah, for us to be able to look at the maps and underground facilities and different things.
GIS coordinator. Get rid of, get rid of wait trim.
Again, we don't have the, the facilities. We don't have the.
For this year.
We did, correct.
But we can use this salary for this year somewhere else.
Also, council chair.
You're ready then?
Wait trim themselves, they cost twice as much as an in-house.
How much we, can, can you give me the amount?
I'm gonna give you it right now. Give me one second. You want the fiscal year or calendar year?
I want the fiscal year. What do we, what do we, what do we pay?
Today from seven, one, twenty twenty four till today? Sorry.
And not just one department, I mean in every single department. You don't miss one.
If you want, I can actually show this.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine.
We trust you, Marty.
I hope you trust me.
Yes, we do.
Again, so just estimates of what we're planning to spend next year based on the revenues for um, local streets. There's two million five hundred thousand dollars for street construction. There is one million two hundred thousand dollars for. Uh, street repair and preservation. There is one hundred thousand dollars for bridge repair and preservation. There's a hundred and fifty thousand for winter maintenance, snow and ice. There is two hundred and two thousand five hundred for administration. That's the reimbursement that we get for the salaries of our employees. Um, and then there is a hundred and sixty one thousand in traffic service.
Administration of.
Uh, two hundred and two thousand five hundred. So again, every month when um, the employees. Do work in highway, it gets reimbursed through the local or major to the.
Yeah, so the highway department itself is actually almost all funded by major and local streets and that's where. The major and local street portions will transfer into highway department to reimburse. Uh, regarding wait trim, from July first, twenty twenty four to today. We had one million thirteen thousand one hundred forty eight dollars in.
We don't got five hundred thousand dollars. What are you talking about? We got one point five million dollars just from wait trim.
Wait trim costs twice as much as an in-house engineer per hour.
Nice. I just want you to know.
I mean, the problem with hiring an in-house engineer is that you have to pay the pension benefits, healthcare.
Uh, Marty, can you give me one second?
Yes, I'm.
If we hired three, three, it's three. If we had Mr. Demon, two other city engineers.
Good luck finding.
You wanna know the truth? I s- I swear to you, I've been in, in so much communication with different engineers, people that worked at some of the greatest companies.
Yeah.
And, and, and in my email, I have about five resumes of, of city, of people that are industrial engineers. So it's not, not me, good luck finding them. What I'm telling you is, you know, and the only reason why I'm asking this question. It was because former Councilman Ray Muscat asked me to bring this up today.
I actually.
Just bear with me. So I told him coming into this meeting, he's probably watching this tonight. And I'm gonna question how much money we pay wait trim?
Thank you.
And if we're paying a one point five million dollars, is that the number you came up with?
It, it's one million uh, thirteen thousand one hundred forty eight dollars. Probably gonna be around one point three million by then.
We'll be by, but, we'll be at one point three by the time we're done. I, and I just want us to be. Look, guys, at the end of the day, I'm not the administration, but I want you guys to think about this. One point three million dollars. Let me finish, please, man. We're gonna spend, if we had two other city engineers on top of Mr. D, you're at four hundred, say, call it five hundred thousand dollars. Now I have five hundred thousand dollars I can go give to buying a new DPW truck. I could put towards overtime. I mean, guys, we really, really, really need to think of these things.
I already asked, why don't we have a seven hundred fifty thousand to a million dollar engineering department, fully staffed? All displays and everything. If you wanna move towards that, we could. If council wants to approve that kind of uh. I, I wouldn't call it a master plan, but like a game plan for how we can build that engineering department so we can cut back from wait trim. I'm all for it. I've already said that, why would we?
What, what is, what is wait trim giving us for a million dollars? They do, they. They do. What they do, councilman. What I'm saying is.
Here's the thing.
A million dollars is a lot of money.
They, yeah, they do stuff sometimes for the recreation firm. They do advising. They did our, we were gonna redo Van Horn and, and.
Van Horn is a blacktop and nothing was on there.
Absolutely, we're, it's duplicative.
Council chair.
Have a, a PE, uh, uh, certified professional engineer paying, you know, top dollar and.
Cause I'll tell you right now, I think Ali Deep is better than everybody at wait trim.
He is.
Yes.
But he's one.
I can find two more of those.
So if you would like to move towards that kind of uh, city structure and have an actual powerful engineering department, you're gonna have to spend. In my opinion, five hundred thousand at the minimum.
How much, how much have we budgeted for in this past last year's budget for wait trim? Can you tell me?
Don't, we don't budget for wait trim specifically. We budget contractual services in the different line items for different funds. The majority of wait trims, the majority of wait trims charges are actually water and sewer charges, so they don't come out of general fund. Only about seven to eight percent of all of wait trim charges are general fund. And part of that, seventy percent is actually funding stuff, which is for grants that we receive, so they, it pays for itself. So the majority of these charges, the one million thirty one thousand is related to water and sewer projects, which also are funded via grants.
No, it's, it was funded through a bond that we went out for. It's not grants, it's a bond. The taxpayers, we, we bonded out for this.
But part of the.
It's half and half.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So. What I agree with you, council chair, is I would like, this city should move forward and try bringing as much engineering in-house. It's just not gonna happen overnight. I've already said that, why don't we do that?
I just feel like that's a.
I mean, do you want to move forward with that?
We're not gonna move forward, but I just want you to know that this, this sucks. This is milking the residents. A million dollars to pay contractual services for wait trip to give us their opinion while we have a, somebody we're paying here.
It's not, it's not opinion and it, it's actual.
They're not doing the work. They're hiring a contractual person out there.
And that's just wait trim. We.
You know what?
Wait trim does the engineering work. Part of the work is the administration part of the constructor.
You know what, you know what wait trim does? You know what wait trim and Van and then he's getting Van and them do? You know what trim does? You wanna redo, you wanna redo Ford Road? Okay, let me look at the engineering or the work on it. This is the contractor we're gonna bring in. This is the people that we feel like are the best. When we go up for bids, yep, okay, great, come out here and do the work. That's what they're doing. They're charging us some money dollars. I swear to you, I can do it. Maybe not the engineering, but I can, I can come out here and start. Man, we're just.
I agree with you. Get two or three engineers and two or three engineering assistants and workers with them.
Yeah, yeah.
So why don't, why don't we move towards with that direction?
Let's have this discussion later. We are, we'll have the discussion.
Okay, I agree with you in that department structure. I do. I'm not saying that I agree with you.
Thank you, Marty.
You're doing great, Marty. Five ninety two. You're doing great, man. This, this, this is cause we all care about the same, man. Five ninety two, you know where we're going onto? Are we still on it? Local streets.
Yeah, let's go out. Let's go. Yeah, what page is that? The one before it? By the way, Marty, I don't mean that your, my, my, my frustration is coming out at you.
No, I know your frustration. I've seen from the inside of the administration part. I know you see it. I'm agreeing with you that we should bring more things in-house.
All I'm saying is we've heard so many times, we have a city engineer and he saves us so much money. He saves us thirty thousand dollars on his toilet. He saved us ten thousand on his ear. We just spent a million dollars to wait trim.
I agree with council chair.
Excuse me? Okay, so then we're, so we're always spending a million dollars and then we also hired a city engineer so that if we're always spending that, then why do you have a city engineer? There's a Armenian.
So, all right, let me just break down a little bit of how the department is currently functioning. Uh, this current city engineer did take over all of the planning and zoning reviews that are necessary, which we were paying wait trim for it, for triple the amount of money. So we did save money in that department. Uh, as Marty explained, the city engineer also oversees the proposals that the contractors are doing. And verifies that they're being done correctly. We also have uh, site inspections that the engineer and the part-timer. Part-time civil engineer are overseeing as well, which used to be done by wait trim and are currently being done in-house. So that is currently the function of the things that are working on. You need somebody to make sure that the project that they're proposing are accurate, that they're not using illegal materials like they did in the fire station in the past. The city engineer does.
What does, what does wait trim do then?
They make the proposal of what they're going to use. They look at the underground studies, they look at the engineering stuff and they make the proposals. Our engineer reviews it, makes sure it's accurate and comes, comes up with a yes or no, or tells them to amend it if necessary.
Are you saying it's okay to have them both?
I do. At the moment, I believe that you, you do need both at the moment. If you do wanna truly develop an entirely engineering service department. In my opinion, you need a minimum of five people and you need a lot of software and capabilities that are. Like thirty eight is major, yes. Um, so a hundred and fifty for street highway, um, what's? Uh, construction, sorry. That's, that's highway construction. Um, then we have street construction at. Five million seven hundred and seventy five, eight hundred and thirty two thousand. Um, there is street repair and preservation. At one million six hundred. Um, there is bridge repair present, preservation at three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, there is a transfer to local at two million seven hundred thousand. So in our city, there is currently a larger need in local roads than in major for replacements. So we are allowed to transfer a certain amount of money from major to local. So this past two years, we've done that. In order for us to increase the amount of work that we can do in the local roads. Um, so that is gonna get transferred next year, two million seven hundred thousand dollars. Um. Then we have a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for winter maintenance, snow and ice. And then five hundred and twenty five thousand for administration, which again is the reimbursement for water for our salaries in the water department staffing. And we have traffic services at seventy eight thousand dollars for the major streets. Yeah, non-motorized.
Like what? So that's like, um, that's traffic signals, uh, painting on ma- major and local streets like the crosswalks. Uh, stop sign.
How much do we have in there?
Uh, seventy eight thousand. Uh, it's a requirement by the state to do one percent each year for ten years and it's, it has to be reported.
Can, can we, can we increase that number?
You can, and I would recommend that because that's where we're gonna grab the match for the grants that I was referring to earlier in highway.
Where do you get that money from?
Where do you?
Increase it. Where are we getting the money from?
The match.
No, 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 no. Right now, it's a seventy, seventy eight thousand. You're telling me to increase it. Is it coming from the general fund?
No, this comes from, from major and local roads. The revenue is right in front of you in page thirty seven. Um.
How much do we have in revenue?
So we have five hundred, seven hundred and one, two twenty two, um.
What, five hundred?
Sorry, five million, seven hundred and one thousand.
How much are we remaining is what we have?
That's the revenues.
And how much are we using? How much?
Eleven million, three hundred sixty eight thousand.
Where are you getting, where are you getting the money from?
Local.
No, it's from our balance that we were carrying from major streets because previously we never used that money. We were building up that money that the state gave us. That doesn't mean that we're spending it within that fiscal year, so.
Are we using any of it from the general fund or anything or the fund balance?
Uh, these are all major and local street funds.
So how do we increase right now at seventy eight thousand? Where can we get that money from?
So there's a fund balance in major streets that hasn't been used completely every single year. We've under budgeted on expenses for each one. Um, so this year, we're asking to allocate an additional amount in order to do more roads in that particular project.
I know. Can you tell me how much is in that? Remit, if, right now, the ones that were in the.
Ending fund balance is three million, six hundred ninety five thousand on your page thirty eight at the bottom. Which means that if you want to take money out of that ending fund balance, you can put it an extra twenty five, fifty, however much you feel is necessary.
That's, so that one's at seventy eight. Let's take that up to at least two hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty?
Yeah. I don't, traffic services, we, we, we need to have, you know, let's do two hundred fifty thousand on that.
Okay.
But ultimately, let's keep that at three hundred seventy eight thousand. How does that sound?
Wait, what?
So the traffic services that you're using, that you're gonna be taking ninety thousand from it, you're taking forty five plus twenty, you said, right? Or you said forty five plus nine thousand? That you're using to match.
It's like twenty nine thousand and forty something thousand.
Yeah.
It's around seventy thousand total.
Okay, but then you're leaving us for traffic services for zero dollars.
We understand that.
Sorry, not necessarily, uh, because we could also grab it from contractual services so we can lower another one of the accounts, but we can put whatever.
But if there's the fund balance of three million, I'd at least like to up this year at least to another three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand?
Yeah, so up in an additional three hundred, cause you're gonna, you're gonna exhaust it when you take it out from.
So three seventy eight?
Correct.
Okay.
I say that because now we can purchase things like, Dearborn has those blinkin flashing stop sign lights. You can purchase maybe potentially speed bumps to run around parks if we wanna.
So are you interested in doing that in the major roads or in the local ones? Cause right now you're budgeting for major. But I, I do know that there's a higher need in local as well.
Correct, but you, in certain areas, you're gonna need, so if we can bump that in. Major and a local, let's do it, because in ma- some major roads, you're still gonna need certain devices that, you know, track your speed and whatnot.
Would you say one fifty in each one or three hundred in each one?
Three hundred in each one. There, there is no price on public safety.
No, I, I understand. I just wanna make sure that.
And if it's not hitting our fund balance and it's from, from our general fund and this is coming from.
So local streets already has one hundred sixty one thousand.
Let's make it a three hundred thousand dollar expense.
So lo.
No, three hundred thou- do three fifty even.
Three fifty even for each or?
No, that only, that one, you're taking out.
Okay, three fifty below.
And this is not coming out of the fund balance of.
General fund.
Of general fund. This is coming from the fund balance of major street, which we receive from different tax brackets from the gas and, and whatnot.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions regarding major street expenditures?
Nope.
Okay, that means we are gonna move on to the biggest department, water and sewer. That is gonna be page. Forty nine on the budget and. What page on the personnel sheet?
Forty nine, you said?
Yep. Director Gans, you still on my sheet? Give me one moment.
Is Shannon still here or she already left? You're still here?
Okay, that would be page twenty on the personnel sheet and page forty nine on the budget.
I'm sorry, personnel, what page you said?
Twenty, twenty.
The last page, huh? So I don't think, just like the other departments we were talking about, our main goal right now is we gotta focus on is just getting us up to that twenty seven. Cause right now we are, um, I don't think we need to change the overall. Quantity yet until we're full. Our issue though is everybody seems to run from water. So right now we actually only have like on a daily basis, people working in water, five. Sometimes six, but with all the time off that individuals get at this city. It's harder to keep a crew consistently out there. So I don't. I guess just budget related, I don't think we need to actually change anything in here. We gotta get full, which we're trying to, but a lot of people seem to run from water and sewer. I don't know why. As I was saying, I don't know why nobody wants to fix them. So we can leave that as is when it comes to personnel until we get ourselves completely full and then in coming years we'll uh. Evaluate, like I said, I mean. Number of people we have in the field needs to be increased, but let's get that full before we even. Revenues. I think most of these are unable to be affected. Four fifty, I'm just, I'm reading the numbers instead of the description. So this four fifty. Five twenty eight, six thirty, six thirty three. Man, all these you can't. Yeah, but even those, I mean, the water sales are what we're paying GLWA and the source disposal charges, what we uh. Oh yeah, we're in revenues here, so.
Leave it the same. How come, how come the ARPA money shows here?
Uh, sorry, I was actually just gonna talk about that. Um, so, so as you recall. The last project that we have for our ARPA funds for the thirteen million dollars is the water main replacement budget. So that money will hit as a reimbursement.
In the water meter, please?
No, so the ARPA portion is gonna handle the water main replacements. The water meter is being covered by the grant and the bond. Um. So that's one of the things that I wanted to mention as well. So again, I don't know why, um. Shannon didn't include the grants for the department, but I do want to mention that if, when you get. To the transportation and distribution section, you're gonna see the expenditure. you're gonna see the expenditures for each one of the water projects. The total, uh, is thirty million dollars, eight hundred and twenty-four, three hundred and sixty thousand that we're expecting to spend, um, on those projects. And, um, I would like to request that that get added. It's on the requested, but it's not in the recommended for some reason. But that would also be offset, um, in the revenues as well for for the reimbursements cuz we are gonna get reimbursed through the bonds or through the grant.
And we don't have the the bond or the grant yet.
So the we have both actually, and we've actually already done a few drawdowns. We've received about two million dollars in reimbursements already for the water meter purchases. So when we purchased the water meters, uh, reimbursement was submitted for that and already awarded. So as we incur expenses, we provide reimbursement requests and they give us the money back.
The council, like, hey, we received this money. There's a treasurer and all like.
The treasurer knows, yes, absolutely. She's the one who allocates.
So the treasurer is the one who actually receives it then. Um, they come in through the state and Sigma, so they are automatically transferred into our bank account. The treasurer gets notice, and then she confirms with comptroller that the money has been received.
All right, thank you.
So so, yeah, so that's just a note. So I would like to request that we include those expenditures, uh, moving forward. They will match exactly what's in your expenditures and the revenues.
But I don't wanna add them if we didn't officially one hundred percent receive all the money. Like, you can't say we already received two million, but I just wanna add the nine million in.
So again, we receive it as we spend it. So every quarter, we provide reimbursement requests for what we've spent.
The news is it's a it's a it's a fluid document. Let's not, let's not put ourselves in that position. When you get it, we can amend it and we can adjust this this, uh, budget.
Okay, we don't need to budget the revenues, but I do need to budget the expenditures because we have contractual agreements already and I need to keep paying them.
We can't budget it if we don't have it.
You're never gonna have the money upfront.
I understand it, and we're never gonna have the, we don't have the money to budget it.
So you do have the money to budget it. You have a contractual agreement. We're already in process. We've already received reimbursements from it. So you do have the money for it. That's why I'm requesting for it to be.
We have a quarter of the amount of money for it. We don't have the nine million dollars for it.
You do. So you already sold the bonds, you already got the grant award. So both of them, you can draw it down as you incur expenses. We're not gonna draw down on the bond first. We're gonna draw down on the grant first. So for this year, we're gonna try to exhaust all of the money, which is probably gonna be the entire amount here and a little bit from the bond.
So you know, when you you add to accidentals, you're going to, you're gonna, and you're not gonna increase the revenue.
I am trying to increase revenue. You're the one who said you don't want to, and you wanna do it as it happens.
Already at sixty-two million dollars in revenue, you're assuming that we're gonna bring in all this extra money in revenue when the reality is we haven't even brought it in this year.
So this is water, and you do have this revenues. So you have a contractual agreement for it. Just like with with the M I D C, just because the money isn't in the bank right now, it doesn't mean it's not coming.
It comes to share. It's different from last year. Last year, they, uh, they included all the grants they applied for, not approved. But this one, it's already approved and already halfway. We only got a quarter of it.
Yeah, but it's already, we have a contract.
We don't have a quarter of it. In order for us to get the grant, you had to sell bonds. We wouldn't have gotten any of it if we hadn't already sold the bonds. So you one hundred percent have a hundred percent of the amount of money at your disposal to be used right now. And it must be used before the twenty-sixth, uh, sorry, the end of.
I actually voted no on this because it also increases the water. I voted no on this.
I am aware, but the council has a whole voted yes, so we currently have an. It passed, so as as a body, you voted yes, and we have a contractual services agreement. We have a bond that's been sold to pay for it. The revenues are already coming in. The projects are already ongoing. So I would recommend for financial responsibility for you to include both the revenue and the expenses. This was an oversight from the board.
You don't gotta do it right this second, but right before we approve the budget, we can do.
Correct. So just like the other amendments that you're requesting for the public hearing, this is gonna be included.
Okay. So this is just for the water meters or?
So it's it's all of that.
How many do we have? If you're kind of fresh.
Sorry, uh, so we have four projects. We have the CSO project, um, and we're gonna get to it in a minute. But for revenue purposes, I'm just gonna tell you, six million, eight hundred thousand dollars for the CSO L forty-one project. For the D W S R F water meter replacement portion, we're using two million, five hundred thousand dollars next year. For the water main replacement project, we're using nine million, three hundred and twenty-one, six hundred and seventy-two thousand. And for the lead pipe replacement, we're using twelve million, two hundred and two, six hundred and eighty-eight.
It it's in.
I got it. So do you want me to continue with the revenues on page forty-nine?
Just continue.
So we are expecting eleven point six million dollars in water sales and thirteen point seven million dollars in water and sewer disposal charges. That that's what consists of in the water bill separated. Then we have sale of meters, five hundred and fifty thousand.
Are these all the water meters that were already used by residents?
Sorry about that. The five hundred thousand.
Meters, what meters? The one?
I'm not gonna lie to you. I don't know if we even.
It it is the sale of meters when a new building comes up and they request for a new meter, um, if you need an.
Yeah, but this is something. What if we don't, what if we don't sell that much next year?
You're not going to.
Yeah, because I know like I missed an appointment. You know?
You can lower that revenue if you want to.
How how did you come up with that number? Who came up with that number? What's the number? They came up with five fifty? Five hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, this year, active activity is only three hundred and ten thousand.
The only note I have from weight trim is is the average, but it does say that it may decrease lightly due to the replacement with the new meter program. But again, if you look at the activity in twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we had received five hundred, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight. Um, the current activity as of April is three hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight. It's projected to be six hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven this year. So this current upcoming year, it was budgeted for five hundred and fifty thousand. But if you wanna lower that, you can.
You guys wanna lower the keep it at five fifty? We can. We we can go to five hundred.
You wanna go five hundred? Okay. So we have non-emergency user surcharges, uh, a hundred eighty thousand. We have Wayne County industrial surcharges, uh, fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, five, yeah, five hundred dollars. We have water bill penalties, uh, six hundred thousand dollars. Water penalty tax all over at four hundred fifteen fifteen thousand dollars. The NSF fees at five thousand dollars. Interest on investments is, um, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then the reimbursement from M M R M A is a hundred thousand dollars.
Ah, and I don't know if you wanna look at the water, water bill penalty.
So the water bill penalties are people pay, um, late. So it adds up to charge, and it's tracked separately on the water bills and our and our utility billing system.
Uh, the projected activity five, six, seven.
Six hundred thousand is not it, bro.
Especially right now, we're supposed to be getting better water meters, and we're given so many breaks and.
I mean.
Water's a necessity. I don't even see us like, why are we charging six hundred thousand dollars just in penalties?
We are not, we're not looking to charge residents. It's just the fact that the thing, the residents wait over the twenty-one day plus the seven day.
Put it at five hundred. You're gonna three hundred and five thousand for the year and it ends in two months. You'd even got a billing cycle coming. You guys already under budgeted that one. Really, we can take that to four hundred.
You wanna four hundred?
You should. Cause you know, you're over promising and under delivering.
I mean, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was at four thirty-eight.
Four hundred is fine. And keep in mind, this, uh, this past, this fiscal year, we, couple times, we, uh, we waived, uh, penalties.
Yeah.
Lake fees, I mean.
That is probably why.
And and we're expected to have, we have new meters, uh, better accurate readings, more people are gonna be on time and paying their bills. Yeah, that's all your fault.
I'm not allowed to you, Compteur. Although the new meters will help with.
We we can go to four fifty.
Four fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean.
There there is a slight correlation, but it isn't the.
Six hundred was, you guys were just trying to find ways to show out that we're making money.
I will say this, this is a water fund, so there's no purpose of us trying to, I'd love to make money.
The half price fund. Yeah, I I get it, guys. Let's go four fifty.
Okay. Is there any other questions on the revenues?
Nope.
Take me one second. Let me make these notes. We're gonna go to page fifty, which is water department admin. Go ahead and do the expenses.
Okay. All right, we have the bond sale admin fees at one million, three hundred and sixty-seven and twelve. Oh, I'm sorry. It's zero. I I missed that. There's nothing in that one right now. Sorry. That was moved to another area, I believe. Okay, sorry, salaries is the one million, three hundred and sixty-seven, um, zero twelve. Then we have our retirement from prior years at fifty thousand. We have part-time at three thousand, nine hundred and seventy, clothing at four hundred, eighteen thousand dollars. Sorry, overtime at four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
About fifty.
Clothing is at zero, but I do believe that you have a new contract for clothing. So do we wanna increase that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, we should definitely increase that cuz right now, we, uh, it's gonna be about twelve.
Yeah, it should be around twelve.
It should correlate.
Why don't why don't we wait until we, you guys, we can only do a budget amendment? We don't know the number. We might come back and say we want ten thousand, or we only need two thousand. Might need two thousand, might be twenty thousand. We don't know.
Yeah, we'll we'll give you the number cuz we have a contract, so we actually know how much it costs.
Can you give a total for the end?
Yes, but before we finalize these numbers, I'll make sure that it's included.
Yep. All right, then we have hospital insurance at four seventy-six, four ninety-three. Life insurance at seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty, uh, general government pension at three hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. Uh, open pre-fund at one twenty, one hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, fringe benefits at one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven. And then we go into supplies, which you currently have eighty-two thousand, five hundred. Utilities are sixty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. Dues and memberships is thirty thousand dollars. That's our Alliance of Rouge Rouge Communities and, um.
That finds downriver watersheds.
An alliance of downriver watersheds.
It may be the treasurer. Well, you probably don't have a treasurer.
Then we have, uh, professional contractual services, which is two hundred thousand dollars.
What's that for?
That's a little bit of weight trim.
Lot of bit of trim.
And, uh, and Hennessy and, um.
Uh, there's, there's also Bowles Brother, which is like, uh, pickups for whenever there's, uh, debris and stuff related to water and sewer. Um, activities, the truckloads that go in and out. And then is there any other contractual services based on all?
Uh, those, a lot of hauling materials and occasionally not, occasionally non-emergency main break work. Sometimes we'll run into a situation where you can tell it's gonna be an emergency, so I've tried to use that GL number for non-emergency excavating concerns cuz I think there's another line item for like emergency water main break repaired. But we've run into a few issues where it, we're either at a depth that our guys can't really get to, or it's just in a weird situation, so. Which one we at, Maria?
So contractual services is at a hundred twenty thousand, so pretty much those two combined revolve around weight trim and, uh, truckload and truckload, uh, debris and things like that, so any type of contractual services between those two line items. Then the nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars is actually the reimbursement to general fund for, uh, services that the general fund, um, does on behalf of water and sewer activities.
Like?
Whether it's like the comptroller's department, the mayor's department, clerk's office, treasurer's office, one. So right now, we have Maximus to do an exact cost allocation. But at for, at this point in time, we're doing cost allocation based on historical numbers.
Okay, but activity till now, hundred and ninety-six thousand.
It's something that's done at the end of the year.
End of the year?
Yeah.
Why do we keep doing these end of the year, end of the year, end of the year, end of the year things? I mean, it's just like, this is like the thirtieth thing we found.
Well, these are different than inner funds. Inner fund transfers, uh, relating to exact expenses that we know are not done, uh, are not supposed to be done at the end of the year, but this is something that is done at the end of the year. Um, I can speak with time around on getting something in place that we can do this on a monthly or quarterly basis so that each fund can reimburse each other in a more timely manner. If you'd like me to propose that?
That's okay. Just speaking up on, thank you.
So you don't want?
You're okay. You you did.
Okay.
You did a great job.
So we got motor fuel, uh, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That's putting, uh, the DPW has motor fuel on site, uh, to fill up their trucks.
Yep. What's the insurance for?
I believe that's M M R M A.
Yeah.
Four hundred forty-five thousand.
What does it like for the whole city or just for the water department?
So that's for the water department. So M M R M A is divided, uh, based on percentage of total activities, uh, between general government, highway, library, water source.
So who so who did they cover here? Equipment for the water department?
Correct. So M M R M A covers all of the equipment and buildings for the city of Dearborn Heights.
And we have to give four hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, that goes into that one fund, right?
Correct.
Okay, what if we don't use it for equipment and we end up getting sued and we give it to other things?
I'm sorry.
Are we just estimating it for equipment? What if what if we don't use it for equipment?
So we're not estimating it based on equipment. We're estimating it based on.
Departments? Liability exposure.
Liability exposure. So exactly when we provide the questionnaire every year that comes back for renewal.
My 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 ask is, we're, cuz I'm seeing insurance for M M R M A, a hundred thousand, four four hundred forty-five thousand, which fine, I get it. We have to, I know how it works. You have to fill up your, um, what's the name?
You have to do the cost allocations to each department.
Okay, but is it all one lump sum or does M M R M A know that we are breaking this down in different budgets? Because what I don't, what I'm, what I'm trying to ask is when the city gets sued, that's just the city gets sued because the guy's driving his bike and falls on our concrete and sues the city, right? Is that gonna come out of a certain department or is that just gonna come out of the whole sum of M M R M A's, uh, breakdown?
The whole sum of the M M R M A.
So why don't we have a whole, just a line item for M M R M A and take them out of different departments? Doesn't make a sense. Doesn't make sense that we're using.
It's different funds.
I know, but just.
They come from different revenue sources. So that's why it's broken down typically. The ones that are broken apart are highway, water, library.
But we're potentially using water. Hang on, Mandy. I want I want Mary on the answer.
It's okay.
We're using water funds for potential other different types of lawsuits, settlements and lawsuits to the water funds. So now like we're charging people's tax bill and their their water on settlements and lawsuits because we don't know if it's really coming out of water. But yeah, the highest amount that we're giving from M M R M A to fill that backfill today is coming from a water fund. I don't think that's fair. I get it. Water is a liability. How many times have we been sued for water in the last year? Okay, a lot. I can promise you, but we got sued for negligence a lot more, but yeah, we're gonna use water, water funds for being sued for negligence.
I've actually asked this question to Plant Moran and asked him about the allocation.
No, I'll tell you, I'll answer it for you, Mandy. You don't gotta ask Plant Moran. I can tell you why. We didn't have the money to get it from anywhere else. We're using the water funds, and we're saying it's for liability for water. So we're charging people's water bills. We're hearing from it all the time, and we're like, oh, no, we don't know why we're doing this. We don't know why everybody's water bill is so high. It's a prime example. Then and then we're trying to say.
I wouldn't say that.
Then we're gonna say, well, what that's gonna be covered through potentially the six hundred thousand dollars we're gonna charge people in late fees. Come on, guys.
Well, when it, when the.
Compteur.
Go down into the sewers.
M M R M A should be its own line item, and that money should not be coming out of water.
The point of the.
But there was no other way of paying for M M R M A because we have to fill it up because we we depleted every year.
They go out and get reinsurance. They go out and buy.
In all honesty, just to offer a little bit of historical data, um, what we get from the interest of what we have invested in M M R M A actually kind of pays off its itself. It pays the renewal every year. For the past three years, we've actually taken the million dollars and put it into our revenues. So we've actually gotten that money back. That is why the money is depleted now is because we actually didn't put any money into M M R M A for the past three, four years.
We added it last year. Yes, we did. I'll pull it up. We added it last year. Yes, we did. I'll pull it up for you. Yes, we did. We added seven hundred fifty thousand dollars last year.
That's just our insurance payment. That's not what's in the fund balance to pay out claims.
We shouldn't have taken out the million dollars if you're taking out four hundred forty five thousand from water. I'm gonna give you guys a quick example. I just have this written down. MMRMA, water, four hundred forty five thousand, every other department, two hundred fifty thousand. The difference is, this is hitting the water, this is hitting the general fund. That's what's happening. I'm giving you an example of a breakdown. We're charging people's water.
We pay way more than six hundred thousand dollars to MMRMA.
I I'm I'm giving you an example.
It's it's okay, but again, if you want to change that, you can.
What I'm saying is, no, none of the money should be coming out of water.
There's still a liability in water, whether you want to admit it or not. The equipment in water is one of the most expensive equipment we own in the city, but that's okay. If you wanna make the change, you can.
This was this was your guys is doing, but I don't wanna hear come back and say the past administration bonded out, and that's why our water bills are so high. The truth is, we're we're charging the water fund. That's what's why our water bills are so high.
Again, this is historical data. It's always been charged that way. We didn't change anything. But that's how it's been allocated. That's how it's separated based on the amount of equipment that's in each department. We can change that, though. It is your budget. If you would prefer for that to come from the general fund, you can.
The mayor's budget.
It's everybody's budget.
You are correct. No, this is the mayor's budget. It says here, this is the mayor's budget. It's last years.
So how much would you like to drop it?
I don't know. Why don't you speak with Plan Moran and figure that part out?
I I asked him the last time I did this cost allocation between the department.
Proud of you, Mandy, because that was a great question.
I literally asked him, why are we doing it this way? Michelle from Plan Moran confirmed with me saying, for now, it's accurate. We can, and then I'll meet with her again uh this upcoming week to ask.
I don't get the answer for it. Obviously, you guys are trying to figure it out, and you're using different funds to figure it out. Historically, you're saying it's been it's been done like this. Historically, it's been done like this since Go Bad has been the mayor.
So um, give me one second. Let me see, one second.
Mandy, let's move on from there.
Uh we paid like, we paid one point six million dollars in the past fiscal year. Yeah, so.
I mean, we're the most sued city in America right now. Everybody's, it's a free for all. Everybody's suing Dearborn Heights. Yeah, no wonder why. I I get it.
So when they're, when they, so water and sewer is only twenty seven percent of the insurance. Which, by the way, the water and sewer is a bigger fund than the general fund, but we're only doing twenty seven percent for water and sewer.
Regardless of it's bigger or not, Mandy, that has nothing to do with that.
It's, we're doing.
And I, but you should not be using water funds for that, is what I'm saying.
Sorry. So what happens when a water truck tilts over like it did a few years ago? Is the general fund going to cover that?
No. Okay, it happened. It's probably not gonna happen again.
It it happens, though. That's why they pay twenty seven percent of what the total cost. Yes, it did.
Happened last year?
Yes.
Where? Why? I never heard of this. Or or they were.
Because our insurance company covers.
Washing out the sewers in the subdivision where I live. And all I'm saying is.
Residence toilet exploded.
And he was all teed off and he he. That went to pay for that.
I'm not allowed, I don't even see that thing.
Did you see, did you hear about a water? I'm just curious. Water truck last year?
But again, I don't, none of this comes into the comptroller's department. This is all covered by insurance, like on our insurance.
I understand that. A water truck flipped last year.
I'm not aware of it.
You know about that? Does DPW know about it?
I don't know.
So you're gonna check with Plan Moran about that.
I'll double check, but the percent, the percent of premium breakdown currently is fifty six point one five percent general fund. Fourteen point six two percent highway, one point five percent library, and twenty seven percent water and sewer.
Yeah, Mandy, thank you. All I'm saying is, I don't want us to be charging the water department on something which is going to increase more water bills. It is the number one issue in the city right now. We are not helping it when we sit there and start saying we're charging people six hun- let me speak for a second, please. It it's not fair to say we're gonna charge people six hundred thousand dollars a year to our residents and penalties when it's a it's a necessity. And then we're gonna come back and we're gonna say, but we're also gonna charge four hundred fifty thousand dollars to put towards our our MMR insurance, but we're saying it's only twenty seven percent, and this is a this is a bigger fund. It's a bigger fund because we're, it's it's water. We know it's a bigger fund. You don't gotta tell me that. The reason why we'd have a bigger fund in the general fund, because we're using it on everything else.
No, what I was trying to say is, hypothetically speaking, because it's a bigger fund, the percentage would be bigger. But in our city, the percentage is much smaller.
Thank you, Mandy. I understand.
Now, let me just say something about the penalties. If you, the whole point of the penalty is to make sure people pay on time. If somebody comes in and has some sort of issue, financial issue, I work with them. I tell them, hey, I'll help you out. However, the penalty is uh there so that some that the water bills get paid on time, so that we could afford water department activities. Otherwise, if we didn't charge penalties, people would just let it roll over the taxes, and the city would never collect their water bills.
Hey, I I thank you.
Now.
I I get that. Can we move on, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Underground storage tank liability is gonna be sixty two hundred. Um, there isn't anything for in for flooding settlements, nothing from the.
FEMA grant that's requested and uh.
So that's the homes that have been approved for demolition through FEMA. Um again, sorry, this is another grant that was missed. This is uh ninety ten, so they're giving us ninety percent of the grant, and we only need to match ten percent of it. And I would like to request for that to be included as well. Um.
But we didn't get the money yet.
We will never get the money until you in incur the expense.
We're moving until we're able to incur the expense.
So that's not how grants work, Mister Baydun. I'm really sorry. When you have a grants agreement, you're committing to do this project. And when you're incurring expenses, which is currently happening, so I know for the grant that we received last year, the appraisals are already ongoing. So the expenses are already incurring, you do drawdowns on a quarterly basis. For FEMA, when you have, I believe, fifty thousand dollars, that's when you can start doing drawdowns. This is already approved, and it's been approved by council. It should be budgeted. The work is ongoing. The residents are expecting for this house to be purchased and demolished.
Where is the ten percent coming from?
Water. It's for water mitigation, FEMA flood mitigation grant.
Wait, when I add uh seven sixty, you mean?
Correct. Ninety percent of that will be reimbursed through the FEMA grant, which should also be offset in the revenues. Which is not there. Oh, no, it is. Sorry, it is there, but it's not budgeted. There's a line item for it. So yeah, I would recommend that same as with the other grants that both of these FEMA ones had included.
Crazy. This just hurts the water.
Council chair, if the council body didn't wanna vote for it, you didn't have to when we got it in for approval.
I voted no.
I don't recall. I believe everybody voted yes for the FEMA grants when Mister Jamal presented them, so.
Voted no when I when I asked, is it gonna affect the water? And they said yes. Voted no.
Doesn't matter.
But again, ultimately, it's a body decision. If the body as a whole wants to remove this from the budget and for us to stop the process of the grants, we can do that.
Just put a put a star next to it, Mandy. This one. Let's move on. Or get the money from somewhere else.
Alright, the next item is repair and maintenance, which is twenty thousand dollars. That's for the equipment in the department. Uh sorry, that's for items in the department, and then there's repair, maintenance, equipment for fifteen thousand dollars, which I believe is the smaller items. It should be combined, yeah. Thirty five, yep, on the top one.
What's that, what's that uh depreciation expense?
Uh that is. That is a non-cash expense. So if you have a truck that's a million dollars, you already bought it, you're depreciating it to reduce the asset.
We do the same with our actual main that we own in the water, in the ground too. Right? We own five hundred miles of main. You can depreciate the asset, because as it ages, it's working less.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Uh we have two more pages.
You have two more pages?
Yeah.
This is what these are for.
What page?
The next one, fifty one.
Fifty one. Actually, hold on.
There's a lot more pages.
There's a lot more pages, but they're a lot smaller. So this is uh water transportation and distribution. Uh salaries, there aren't any salaries because all salaries are in the five three six fund. So there's not any salaries in uh broken down in these ones, and the department. Uh water and sewer supplies, one hundred seventy five thousand. Contractual services, six hundred six thousand five hundred. Uh Ecos Creek, four hundred seventy five thousand. Operating maintenance, four hundred seventy five thousand. Uh C S L retention basin, that is five hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Uh water purchased, which is the one purchased from Glua, is five million, twenty thousand, six hundred sixty one dollars. Sewer disposal charges are estimated to be seven point eight million dollars. Uh sewer disposal charges are seventy percent Rouge Valley, uh sewer disposal system, and thirty percent uh Downriver Utility Waste Water Authority. Then we have uh sixty thousand in repairs and maintenance. And then, so the.
So the prison, prison maintenance, requested one sixty, give them sixty.
Um, is there a reason why you requested one sixty? For repairs and maintenance, but I'm assuming because the trucks and the equipment that he needs. But unfortunately, the one sixty.
Yeah, I would assume it's for, if it's for vehicles, it's due to the age of the vehicles. If it was specifically designed for things that are in the ground, it's just to increase that added expense of gate valves, hydrants, that a lot of times, obviously, as they age, we're running into more and more issues with them.
So the next line item, water main replacement, um. Mariana, is this?
What number is that?
Sorry, what are you looking at?
How come uh the water uh sewer emergency repairs, nothing was requested, but we gave two hundred thousand?
For which depart- for which area, sorry?
It's uh nine seven three.
Emergency water sewer repairs?
Yeah.
Uh because it was misdirected director, but it's historically been necessary, because there's always emergencies sewer repairs.
Are we expecting to to uh spend all the two hundred thousand by the end of this fiscal year?
It's budgeted in case of emergencies. If it doesn't happen, we don't use it. Just like this current year, we budgeted for two hundred thousand, but we've only used fifty six thousand, seven hundred and seventy three. I believe there's a few pending um invoices, but we probably won't reach the two hundred. And yes, with regards to the water main replacement item, which is nine seven three zero zero one, uh it was budgeted this year for the thirteen million dollars for for that project. Um it does seem like there's a duplicate line item at the bottom, um which is called the D W S R F water main replacement project. Um so one of them will have to be removed. We'll make that correction.
Which one is that again?
The water main replacement is five nine two, five three seven, nine seven three, zero zero one. And then, all the way down at the bottom, five nine, second to the last, five nine two, five three seven, nine eight one, two zero one. D uh D W S R F water main replacement project.
But this is like, this is a number zero, though.
Correct. So the current year, we budgeted for the full grant amount, which is the thirteen million dollars. Um plus the engineering services. Next year, we're only estimated to spend nine million dollars. But it will be moved to the thirteen million dollar item, so that you can see the historical trend will remove the other one that was created at the bottom.
But it's too long, we need to combine them.
Okay.
Um, I will say this. This is one of those items that weren't included in the recommended budget, but again, they have a bond and an agreement that will offset the expenditures.
Are you gonna go ahead and combine up, right?
Yes, so we're gonna put that before the final budget will include those numbers. Um, so we have upper grant expenditures, um that actually covers the water main, right? Upper grant expenditures.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then state grant expenditures and federal grant expenditures, that's also uh covers the the water projects that we're taking on.
What are you looking at? Well, PJ, you're looking?
That's uh fifty one. It's right under uh emergency waters, sewer repairs. Those three items are um actually the expenditures for the D W S R F, so we'll, we have to remove those items and put them into the last three items. And then those will become revenues. Uh capra outlet equipment, uh we did four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Track density, do you know what that four hundred fifty thousand is gonna cover?
Shannon cautioned me to use it this fiscal year, because she thought it might have been in there for maybe a prior purchase, but uh I'm gonna get, I don't know if we'll actually end up using it this year, but obviously trying to get bids on whether it be a VACT or another excavator. Preferably a back, a vector or a uh concrete breaker. She wasn't sure if that was for um. I mean, it's not gonna take me long to get prices and put it on an agenda to.
Let's get it on.
Yeah.
Give me for this fiscal year, and that's getting official?
Yeah, we'll probably have to pay before we get the vehicle. They don't keep these vehicles on stock.
So we are budgeting forty seven thousand for the C S L L forty two project. That product is nearing completion. Uh and most expenses have been exhausted. Uh C S L L forty one project is next. At nine eight one, zero one two. That one actually needs uh to be increased uh a lot more. Uh which the remaining bond, the twenty twenty one bond, correct? Twenty nineteen or twenty twenty one one?
Twenty one.
Yeah. Twenty twenty one bond, um that covers the L forty one expenses. I'm not a part of it, and then a part of it will be uh, yes. Uh the fifty one thousand isn't gonna cover that amount. Uh I will confer with engineer Ali Deeb to figure out what the remaining expenses are on that project and get to you and get back to you. Yeah. Uh the water meter replacement, we are I would say about a quarter of the way there in terms of expenditures. Um and the total project, is it twelve million or nine million for the water main meter? So I'll get you the total expenditures for the water meter project. Uh water main project, we are just starting that. I just paid the first bill for the water main project. And then the lead pipe replacement, uh that is gonna happen um after the water meters are replaced, because part of the water meter project is when the contractor goes into the house and replaces the water meter, they determine whether the line is uh possible lead. So then they track those on the houses, and then once we get that total amount, then we can actually get a contractual value. And right now, we can only estimate.
Okay.
And then that is it for water transit and distribution. Is there any questions?
No.
Okay, we'll make sure to give you those numbers regarding the projects.
Thank you.
So next, one, page fifty two, it's pretty easy, um. What is that?
Twelve.
Yeah. Yes, so it's thirteen um.
Just send me two, send me an email, please.
Okay, no problem. Um so this is a, this is a subset of the water department. They only have some uh water and sewer supplies for specifically water tapping and install at a hundred twenty five thousand. And then a small amount for repairs and uh maintenance equipment for some of the equipment they use. Any questions for this one? Number fifty three, water meter reading and repair. Uh so we have meter supplies for seventy five thousand dollars that covers uh the current meters and the meter reading equipment, um that parts might be broken that need to be fixed. That's what that covers. I'm not sure why they put a hundred dollars in contractual services to.
It's probably, it's probably a forcing online with the new online way.
Yeah.
Or maybe internet, who knows?
So then we got the repair maintenance equipment for five thousand dollars. Again, uh the water meter reading equipment is a little bit older, so it sometimes needs repairs. So page fifty four, uh water sewer and maintenance. This one has contractual services at two hundred thousand. Um, that's for like the underground sewer uh lines that need to be maintained. Um that's for like the underground sewer uh lines that need to be maintained. We have five hundred ninety thousand, which is mostly it's mostly done by a contractor. Uh previously was Duke's uh root control. I'm not sure what the current who the current contractor is for that.
Uh it's on the May thirteenth agenda.
Okay.
We went out to bid and I got the recommendations sent.
Okay, so that's gonna be on the May thirteenth agenda for that contractor. Um same thing for the lining.
So the lining, we haven't used much. Is that something we?
I'm not sure that's that.
Uh the lining, just due to, I think it takes a substantial amount of engineering work to make sure we're lining the proper pipes at the proper time. So it hasn't happened this year, but this city is in dire need of using that as often as possible. So we're trying to set up a program with the right contractor, the right engineering to determine exact because it's far more involved than the emergency cleaning and T V and jetting cleaning.
That's uh eight hundred forty five thousand revenues. That's good.
Yeah, right now, like that that is gonna be something that will budget amendment to cover overtime, at least for this fiscal year, or some of the other expenses.
Can we use that?
It's it's in the water, in the water department only.
The water department.
Because we're not, I'm adamant with most people, especially most, we're not using that to cover overtime in a different department. Even though, you know, it kind of shows it in here, we're never gonna move that out of the water fund. So it'll cover in the event we run into any overtime issues with the water department right now, which it is possible, but that lining contract is gonna take um a little bit more diligence in the coming years because we need to we budget for it and we need to use it. It's a little more difficult to bid out, figure out exactly which one to use. So we need to keep it there. I agree. It's not spent this fiscal year, but the goal is to get to the point where we're using that every year.
Uh you capital outlay.
I don't know why that specific amount is in there. It's in there capital outlay and other areas of the we can we can combine obviously all the capital outlay within the water fund. Because there was the four hundred fifty for the street sweeper, which I don't think we I mean, we haven't I guess you could theoretically pay for one of the street sweepers could be used strictly for water main problems. Uh I don't anticipate that one getting spent this year, but.
And then the last page is the water and debt retirement. We have the principal for the twenty twenty one capital improvement bond for eight hundred thirty thousand dollars. The interest is five hundred two thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh the Wayne County Basin S R F principal is a hundred forty eight thousand. The interest is nineteen thousand. The C S O basin for Wayne County, one twenty, one hundred twenty thousand. The interest is twenty nine thousand. Uh so the down river low and down river charges, that is for um D U A, Down River Utility Waste Water Authority. We are actually a part owner in that facility. Um so you got the principal at sixty three thousand. Um the S R F principal is sixty three thousand, the interest at ninety nine thousand. Then the S R F principal at two hundred thousand, the interest at thirty six thousand. Then the A and B principal at a hundred thirteen thousand and the A and B interest at eight thousand nine hundred dollars. So the bottom shows the total appropriations for the water department. Uh water fund at twenty nine million nine hundred seventy nine thousand, eight hundred nine nine dollars. Uh that is um two two million two hundred seventy two thousand dollars more than the uh revenue.
Okay.
And then the beginning fund balance is a hundred seven million nine hundred seventy eight thousand and the earning fund balance is one million, one hundred five million, seven hundred six thousand dollars. And that should do it for the water fund. Is there any questions?
You know how I feel about this, about this water, but we're gonna not have this.
I am not.
We don't gonna have the, I just wanted to vent for a second. I'm gonna take it open to Ariosa Anis.
Yes, I'm also with my uh presentation.
Thank you. We're gonna take it over to the public. Questions? Is uh Vince, are you asking to raise your hand? Okay. Unmute them, please. You got state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You got two minutes.
Ripkowski Columbia Street. Uh my question was, excuse me, D P W director. Um you mentioned that uh you won't be doing a lot of Parkland Park. What's going on in Parkland Park?
Parkland Park is costing the city a large amount of money.
I've known that for years.
Yep. We've uh had meetings with Wayne County and we are looking at Wayne County to be able to maintain, take it back over. They actually legally own it, so.
Right. We've leased it for a dollar a year for the last several years. But yeah, that's a smart move because it's Parkland Park costs us a lot of money to operate.
Yeah, just give it back then. We are.
Yeah.
We're taking it back.
Because our current our 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 last uh our creation of director has hardly ever used it properly or to its fullest potential. Thank you. That was my question. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Hi Sue. State your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You have two minutes, please.
Stukaminski, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. Um I looked up cement and fifty percent of the cement comes from other countries. And I looked up water meters and forty percent come from other countries. And I know the vehicles uh parts, a lot of them come from other countries. In any of these prices, are we looking at tariff increases?
Well, a lot of the a a lot of the water meters have already been purchased and pre-ordered and paid for already. And they're made in America.
Okay.
And then as far as the uh the cement, you know, that's that's based on what the what what is it?
Same country. I don't.
Yeah, they're from it's still within the same country.
Yeah, I don't believe we import anything from another country.
Well, I mean, a lot of the companies here that use it and and distribute, get it from other countries. I'm just saying, like, when you talk about getting a dump truck and everything, I don't wanna hear it this time next year, oh, well, we didn't take into account tariffs and therefore we overspent and now we're out of money again.
Huh, gonna happen.
Just a thought.
Majority of. Thank you.
Yep.
Again, I don't disagree, which is one of the reasons that we did a change order for our current construction um road, which we added an additional road is because they're keeping the prices from two years ago, which are much lower than the current prices. Uh but yes, when we go out for new bids, those increases will be taken into account for all of our street projects.
Thank you. Thanks, I'll be your Margaret.
Hey, um my working. So with the streets and the painting of the crosswalks and all of that, that said that was gonna be redone um every year Ali Deep had said. Um if I remember and recall correctly, the painting was supposed to last years, the one that we got, the new one. And it's not. So are we using the same paint or it's gonna be different? Will it last five years?
Look, look, I I will answer that. Wear and tear is never gonna stick around. The roads, the driving, the, you know, the cars, the good, the snow, the plowing, it's not gonna stay, Margaret. But the good news is it's being budgeted for every year to make sure that they're being maintained.
Okay, and then when is the grants gonna be going on and when are we gonna see uh boots on the ground with the grants that was heard of tonight?
The what is it?
The boots on the ground for the grants that we've heard about tonight?
I I don't know.
We already have.
They're saying already has?
So for instance, the water meter project uh contractors are already starting in area six. I think they're gonna be moving on to the next year soon. Uh water main, uh we uh we we just paid out the first uh pay application to bid rate contractors. And the lead line is uh in the future. Now, regarding the safe streets, uh for all Marana might be able to try to give a timeline on when that should be implemented.
So again, it had to be designed twice at two different locations, but they are currently approved and ready to move forward with the installation. So you should see it before the end of the summer.
Thank you. Then sure, anything for you, Margaret?
Okay, thank you, guys. Have a good night. You're welcome. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Yeah, I'm good.
Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none. Thank you, Mehdi. Thank you, uh D P W. Thank you, Mariana.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George. Absolutely. George is sitting up there like, man, what am I still doing here?
That car is still, George.
George, you chose this day.
What did you do when I come?
Recording stopped.
Huh? The pants? What did you do with the pants? What pants? Black pants? You mean, you mean a black pants? Yeah, it's. No, I didn't go on and which one?